Okay, all right folks, we are on the air. So, welcome this evening to our Albany City Council meeting and we have some new faces here this evening. And we have a wonderful rainy spring day, but at least welcome spring, so we enjoy that. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, roll call.
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Helen?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Okay, before we get to our scheduled business, we have a couple proclamations that I'll read this evening, so I'm glad we have a good attendance this evening to hear about some of the great programs that are out there in our community. So this proclamation is National Service Recognition Day for April 1st, 2014. Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas, the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet cities' needs. And whereas, three national service programs active in Albany include the Foster Grandparent Program, the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, and the Senior Companion Program. And whereas, national service participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, supporting veterans and military families, providing health services, and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas, national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas, national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, national service participants demonstrate dedication and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a pledge that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1st, 2014. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canop, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014 as National Service Recognition Day in Albany, Oregon, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of nation service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. And witness whereof, I hereon to place my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 26th day of March, 2014. And our city also, with our Parks and Rec program, we also have the Foster Grandparent Program, so we're very proud of being able to have that program within one of our city programs, so. Okay, and next is another proclamation. This is Child Abuse Prevention Month and Awareness Month, April 1st, 2014. Whereas, this April marks the 31st year of the U.S. Presidential Proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas, each April, Child Abuse Prevention Month activities are held in communities across the nation to raise awareness about child abuse and the need for the entire community to become involved. And whereas, during the National Child Abuse Prevention Month, we renew our commitment to preventing child abuse and rededicate ourselves to working together to ensure all children can have a bright and hopeful future. And whereas, the goal is to rally our communities to understand what we can do to assist and encourage Oregon families. And whereas, the dream of safe and stable families can only be realized by society and individuals coming together and taking responsibility. And whereas, preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas, child abuse and neglect not only directly harms children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, and health problems. And whereas, abuse and neglect are far more reaching than you might imagine. No socioeconomic group is immune. Children of all races and ethnicities are victims of child abuse. In 2012, 10,054 of Oregon's children were abused or neglected. Child abuse is a total community problem affecting all levels of society. And whereas, effective prevention programs succeed through partnerships of community groups which help support parents to provide a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas, approximately 3 million children are reported abused and neglected in this country every year, with 69,096 reports of child abuse to social service agencies in Oregon in 2012. And whereas, over four children die each day in our nation as a result of child abuse and neglect, with 17 such deaths in Oregon in 2012. And whereas, the effects of child abuse need to be addressed by the entire community. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canop, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and April 1st as the Day of Hope in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to recognize and prevent child abuse. And witness whereof, I hereon to place my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 26th day of March, 2014. With that, we do have a representative here from the ABC House, and it's a wonderful organization. We are very fortunate in Albany to have ABC House, that is able to be able to having a program, administer a program to be able to help families that are affected with child abuse. And Karen Sheeler, if you'd like to come forward, and there's some events coming up that she'd like to tell us about.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for the proclamation and for continuing to support our efforts around child abuse awareness and prevention. I'm here tonight to represent the Lynn County Committee for the Prevention of Child Abuse. We are a group of many nonprofits, and I, as a private citizen, am a member of that community. I've been an advocate for children for my entire life, but over the last 11 years, particularly children who have been abused. And I want to share that we have many wonderful things happening in our community across the county. I'd like to invite all of you next Tuesday, April 1st, here at 7:00, out in front, for a ceremony that will help us all recommit to protecting our children and to honor those children who have passed due to abuse. And to help you learn new ways to help yourself as parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and community members with children living next to us. You have to learn. It's an ugly subject nobody wants to think about, but if we're not educated, we can't help eradicate child abuse. Our statistics have gone down, but my experience is they will go back up again. And children deserve a lifetime of happiness, not just a couple years of their youth, because child abuse follows them their entire life. They can be and recover and be successful citizens, but they have to have our help and our support. So not only are we doing the Day of Hope on Tuesday, April 1st, on Thursday, April 3rd, Lebanon is hosting a similar event to help raise awareness in their committee. You can turn our town blue. And what that means is that through the committee, and you can contact CASA or ABC House, you can purchase for $5 lights and get ribbons and show those lights at night and the ribbons during the day. Open conversation with your neighbors around child abuse. Know that you can go to ABC House or Lynn County CASA, and you can attend trainings that will help educate you, that will help you protect the children in your lives. Onto April 19th, at the Heritage Mall, we have been doing this for about five years now, collecting shoes for children who are in foster care. There are over 400 children a year in Lynn County who are in foster care. And many, many of those children come with the clothes on their back, and many of those clothes don't fit. This is just one small way that anyone can help, is to pick up a pair of shoes. We tend to think about all the little ones, but don't forget our teens. We have a lot of teens in foster care who need shoes. So I would encourage you to come to the mall on the 19th. Bring a pair of shoes if you're able. Come, and again, be educated about this subject. It's difficult, I won't say it isn't, but you can help. And then on April 30th, this is very exciting. When I started in this area, there were two or three people working. On April 30th, we're going to be meeting at the Samaritan Center in Lebanon and have a forum, and we're bringing many people from all over Lynn County to say, what are we as a county really going to do in a mass effort to educate our community and better protect our children? You can be a part of that. You don't have to be a mayor or a police chief. You can be a community citizen interested and be there. And I would really encourage you to reach out to any of the nonprofits that are here dealing with child abuse. Reach out to your law enforcement. They are such an integral part, as is Department of Human Services. There are people working really hard, but it can't be left to those agencies. This is an epidemic. We want and expect good healthcare and good lives. I'm going to leave you with one last statistic. That one in every four girls and one in every six boys will be sexually abused before they reach age 18. That has been a statistic for many, many years. We haven't made a cut in that statistic. And those are only the children we know of. It's a secret, and it's powerful, and it's damaging. And we, as adults, owe the children of our community to become educated. With education, we can make change. So I thank the mayor and all of you, and I hope to see all of you next Tuesday night at 7:00 PM out here. Thank you.
Be there, yeah. Thank you so much, Karen. Yeah, thank you for all you've done too, for ABC House. Thank you. Okay, next, scheduled business. So first is business from the public. And this is a time that we allow public comment on any sort of policy-type questions or if it pertains to something that's on our agenda this evening. So I see that we have quite a bit of folks here this evening, and I am presuming everybody's here from the one agenda item, which is over the ordinances over the medical marijuana. So it might be a little challenging if everyone's planning on speaking. Can you raise your hand if you wanted to speak this evening? Okay, so there's not too many, so that will help. So what I'll ask is, if, when you make your comments, if maybe somebody's already touched on that point, that you don't repeat the same point, we're, every one of us up here, we are used to sitting here for hours and hours and hours listening to testimony, and mostly if you're here for land use issues, people are bored to death over land use issues. But you might have somebody sitting next to you or behind you, and they might be maybe a little bit more anxious to get through the meeting, and they might have to maybe only have a certain amount of time that they can stay and want to be able to still speak. So we want to be able to kind of take into consideration everyone that would like to be able to speak, so if we can kind of make sure we don't repeat certain, you know, certain points that somebody else makes, so. How many of you also here, if you could raise your hand, do not live in the city limits of Albany? Okay, so I do hope you realize this is over Albany city policy. This is not, I mean, if you were living out in the county, county courthouse was across the street, so they have a total different ordinance that they were looking at than what City of Albany was looking at, so. It's two different separate governments, but. Okay, so I'll just going to be, raise of hands, who would like to come up and speak, and then Greg, if you want to first, and then maybe Ray, if you want to right after, Rhea, is it Rhea? Right after, kind of be prepared, so it kind of make expedite it if you're kind of getting up where it's about done. So anyone who wants to testify, you'll need to immediately state your name, spell your last name, and furnish your address for us.
Okay. My name is Greg Bectel. I live at 978 Ferry Street, Southwest. Last name is spelled B-E-C-H-T-E-L, and I do live here in Albany. Quick shameless plug though, before I get into the medical marijuana stuff, I had no idea that this was Child Prevention Awareness Month, and a couple months ago, we were approached by an organization, my company, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Albany Alternative Health Solutions, an organization called Bikers Against Child Abuse came and asked if they could put brochures up, and this is more to the folks behind me. We actually have brochures, if you're a motorcycle enthusiast, at our location at H-20 Pacific Boulevard. And you were interested in learning more about this group, come out. They're an incredible group that protects children during the process of trial, since a lot of children are intimidated from actually going to trial against their abusers. But shameless plug for that organization. All right, you have before you, I talked about this Monday, now you have before you two ordinances. One is a moratorium authorized by Senate Bill 1531. The other is AMC 050825. Understand that actually, with respect to Mr. Kidd, he was mistaken on Monday that the ban is the only ordinance that has a deadline. The ban must be in place by May 1st. According to Senate Bill 1531, additional regulations have no due date. So if you're trying to decide which direction to go, the one that would give you the most leverage, of course, would be regulations. To it, it was brought up again that there is concern about the form that marijuana takes for patients. We've said this time and again, that the city has its purview to require either a pharmacist on-call or on-site. We've asked that all along. Again, that's a regulation that you could potentially add in lieu of doing just a straight ban, because a ban, again, removes all access, not just the bad access. Now, the Redemption Center recently was brought up in this hall, and the reason why I bring this up is because there were seven to nine people who dissented and said, we don't want this in our neighborhoods. Later on, after the vote had passed, someone asked this council, why did you vote for this? And the response was, because public opinion was against it. Public opinion was seven to nine people. Look behind me. There are more than seven to nine people who dissent on these ordinances, or more to the point, the moratorium. Now, if you do, I'm sorry, it was mentioned on Monday as well, that 21 cities have banned medical marijuana dispensaries in Oregon. Out of 242, Albany would be only the 22nd city in the state to ban medical marijuana. And if you do vote for a ban, you owe an explanation to everyone in this room as to why you chose to ban medical marijuana. You need to explain to Elizabeth Bukard, who you met on Monday night, why she doesn't deserve safe or local access, and how I can walk into the emergency room last week with a sore throat and walk out with oxycodone. The concern is not about marijuana in this area of the country, it's about opiates. Marijuana provides an avenue for people to get off of opiates, and yet we can freely get them. So that's all I have this evening. I just wanted to leave you with that, that your options are forcing patients to go to other methods, such as opiate or black market dealers versus responsible regulation. The choice is simple. And that's all I have.
All right, okay, thank you, Greg. Rhea?
Good evening and thank you. I'm Maria Graham. I live at 1440 Lonridge. G-R-A-H-A-M is the spelling. I would like to reiterate my stance that Albany's Cannoc kitchen and research should be grandfathered to any changes that the council deems necessary regarding cannabis businesses in Albany. Having been granted a permit two years ago and working diligently and legally all this time to help others, I cannot imagine having to stop doing what we do. Please understand, I have not made one thin dime in doing what I do. So, and I have taken several thousand dollars equity out of my home to do this work. Why? To help others get well and stop poisoning themselves with pharmaceuticals. You speak of your fear of cannabis getting into the hands of children. Currently, it's easier for children to get pot than alcohol outside of your home, because dealers don't check ID. At stores where medicine and other deadly items like alcohol and cigarettes are sold, they can be regulated. When you keep marijuana sales on the street and out of the store, you're going to have it in the hands of youth even more. I again encourage you to get funding from the OMMP for the dual enforcement that you seek. Here is the breakdown on funds that are given to other Oregon Health Authority programs instead of the OMMP where this should fall. Although, to quote the state, the OMMP is funded entirely by fees generated by the program. And that's the $200 that myself, my mother, my daughter, and all these patients pay. So they give emergency medical services $1.75 million a year for the last two years. The drinking water program, $3 million. Social-based health centers, $500,000. Family planning, $1.15 million. The trauma system, $300,000. Midwives, $30,000. And the senior farmers market program got a mere $5,000. The majority of the programs, the patients in the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program are senior citizens, and they get a mere $5,000 pittance of that. So, for the next funding period, there will be $9 million in excess, Mayor, and I hope that you will ask them for some, for the funding. It's fair. You know, if we're paying for the program, then let all of us pay for it as we should. So if you have any questions, please call. I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. And you have, yes. And then let's have a second person get ready. Was it, yes sir, you can next.
Good evening. My name's Karen Chambers. Last name is C-H-A-M-B-E-R-S. My address is 3472 College Loop Southeast here in Albany. First of all, thank you for letting me speak this evening. And I did want to touch on the opiates issue. My son broke his collarbone when he was still a teenager. The next day, his phone rang off the hook for his friends wanting to buy his drugs from him. I had another friend who had an addiction problem with opiates. She's from Oregon City. She came to Albany, visited me, perfectly healthy, went to our local ER, and came home with a script for opiates. Opiates are a serious issue. They're killing a lot of people. Cannabis is not. First of all, looking around in observation, I would guess that you guys are either parents or grandparents. There's a strong likelihood as such. How would you feel if a doctor gave your child or grandchild a death sentence? Then suppose you were presented with an alternative, albeit controversial, treatment that at best had shown to contain effective cancer-trading properties and at its worst, could provide pain relief and comfort? What would you do? That was the case with my family. In 2006, my 19-year-old nephew Levi was diagnosed with rhabdomyosarcoma, a soft-tissue cancer that affects primarily juveniles. It's quite rare, and at the time of his diagnosis, there were only 200 other known cases in the United States. Also, at the time of his diagnosis, we were given a very bleak prognosis. He would be dead in three months. My brother, Levi's father, is a general manager of a King Super, a Kroger store, familiar to, similar to our Fred Meyer. He was approached by his lead pharmacist and encouraged to pursue medical cannabis as a treatment for his son. They reside in Colorado. During that time, it had been legalized for medicinal use, however, not for recreational. They started Levi on various forms of cannabis, from ingesting it in foods, known as medibles, to tinctures and smoothing, smoothies, excuse me, to vaporizing. Levi did eventually succumb to his cancer, but cannabis enabled him to eat, when traditional cancer treatments drastically reduced that ability. It reduced the cell destruction that so often occurs during chemotherapy, and during the periods of time between chemo rounds, he experienced cell regeneration, so the destruction was not as severe to his healthy cells. As most of you probably know, chemotherapy doesn't pick and choose which cells it destroys. Two minutes prior to his heart beating for the last time, Levi was able to look at his dad and give him a thumbs up. It helped him function during the most difficult fight of his life. Were they not able to access this form of medication locally and purchase it legally through a dispensary, we would never have had the time, the additional three years that we had to spend with him prior to the end of his all-too-short life. In addition, last year in March, a close friend of mine was diagnosed with esophageal cancer after his non-Hodgkin's lymphoma went in remission the year prior. The day of his diagnosis, he started on a daily dose of Rick Simpson oil. And when rechecked by his oncologist, four weeks and two days later, was found to be cancer-free and remains so to this day. As a positive side effect of the RSO, Rick Simpson oil, he's had decade-old burn scars slough off and reveal brand-new skin. I've seen this with my own eyes. There's no way he would stop taking this oil just due to the miraculous and positive things that have happened to him. Another very dear friend of mine was attacked last April and nearly killed. She suffers from extreme PTSD and has had night terrors. Of course, that was only on the night she was actually able to sleep. Through the use of medical marijuana, she's been able to keep her PTSD in check. Does she have bad days? Absolutely. But they're few and further between, and she now knows that she has access to some relief for her crippling symptoms. This is a person who, prior to the attack, was a vivacious, outgoing, personable young woman. After the attack, she was reduced to not wanting to leave her home. She would attempt to go to public gatherings and would end up having to leave early, nearly crippled with panic. I witnessed these panic attacks firsthand. Through the use of cannabis, she's able to keep her symptoms in check and is returning closer to the person she used to be, though she will be forever changed. My guess is that many of you already know someone who is an OMMP patient, but my guess is also, they probably haven't told you because of the negative stigma that's attached. Or perhaps it's because they're visible in the community and don't want to be judged as a stoner just trying to smoke weed legally. We keep hearing that frequently. As a community, we need to move past this mentality and not lump OMMP patients into the stoner or drug abuser category, because this simply is not the case. I understand there are many negative stigmas. I understand most people can't get past the basement scene in that '70s show, or the old Reefer Madness movies they used to show in the '60s. What we're talking about today is not recreational use of marijuana. We're talking about patients who suffer from a myriad of ailments, from cancer to Parkinson's to Crohn's, Lou Gehrig's Disease, PTSD, fibromyalgia, migraines, tremors, chronic pain, the list goes on and on. We are talking about patients and their ability to access their medication legally and locally. None of the people within the OMM community are here to upset those who are not OMMP. None want to put you at unease or cause you any type of discontent. They're merely asking to be able to legally access the medication that's working for them at a local, licensed, and regulated facility. They have all chosen not to use synthetic medication for many reasons. First and foremost, the nearly limitless number of negative side effects and contraindications. Dispensaries are a necessary part of the OMMP. When a patient gets their card, oftentimes, they may not have a grower. Or what if their grower relocates or stops growing? Medical marijuana, like the synthetic pharmaceuticals so many of us are used to, is more effective when used on a regular basis. Some people aren't able to eat without it, some are unable to move without it, some are unable to even leave their homes without it. Had I known then what I know now, my father, when my father was diagnosed with cancer, I would have done whatever I could do to get it for him, including buying it on the street if that's what it took. Perhaps then, he wouldn't have died one month after his diagnosis. You don't have to agree with OMMP. You don't have to participate in OMMP, but I, we are asking you not to make a decision that would negatively impact countless people who have benefited so greatly from this legal, medicinal approach to their medical issues based on false information or suppositions. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, yes sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Corwin Brown. I live at 448 Churchill Downs here in Albany, Oregon. I am an OMP, OMMP patient. I'm also a disabled veteran. Spent 13 years in the Army in Special Forces and Special Operations. I've seen plenty of the what the world has to offer. Tonight...
Could you spell your first name?
Corwin, C-O-R-W-I-N.
Okay, oh, thank you.
One of the things I wanted to discuss tonight, I'm an advocate for my fellow veterans. One of my dear friends, who was a mentor of mine, who was a Vietnam vet, he was in Special Forces and he was blown up, took a mortar round in the hip, and one of the things he told me when I went into Special Forces was, "Two. One, watch your backside. Two. When you're done, if you do have to go to the VA, be very careful." He himself is slowly dying right now, and others that he has seen, Vietnam vets, over the past 30, 40 years, are loaded up on opiates. My friends that had come back from Afghanistan, if they knew that they were going to be loaded up on opiates when they came back to the US, they should have just brought some of them back from Afghanistan, because that's all we're getting it from, is from Afghanistan and other countries that grow it. and other countries that grow it. My father was in Air Force, four years, two years in Vietnam, saw lots of combat. My mother, who is German, became a nurse when she came to the United States. So I was literally brought up, uh, 40 years of, "Don't do this. It's bad for you." You know? I'm one of those people where i- if it's your body, you do what you want. You know, I don't smoke. I don't drink that often. Even when I was in military, I didn't drink that often because it was all about training. Uh, one of the things that's really important, uh, to understand is that it is stigma. Forty years. No, 70 years. Uh, 2003, I had a chance, when I was in Special Operations, I had a chance to, uh, go to a barbecue. A buddy of mine who was a former Navy SEAL. And, uh, we were sitting outside having a barbecue, and this gentleman, you know, was talking about surgery. He's like, "Yeah, I gotta get back to Chicago." I'm like, "Oh, Chicago." I said, "Are you a doctor?" He said, "Yes, I am. I am a neurosurgeon." I said, "Oh, that's cool. Do you like your job?" He said, "I love it." I said, "Oh, by the way, my name's Corwin. How you doing?" He's like, "Oh, hi. My name's Sanjay. Sanjay Gupta." And that was before I knew who he was. So, after I got out of the military, which has been about two years, um, if any of you have ever seen a car going 40 miles an hour and stop really quick, that's what it felt like when I hit the earth from a parachute jump, jumping with, uh, uh, Colorado with some Navy SEALs and other Special Forces guys. And, uh, that was just one of my injuries. I literally have almost no lower back now. It is pretty much mush, bone on bone. And I didn't want to subject myself to opiates because I've seen what my- my other fellow veterans have gone through. And, uh, I have one friend that's slowly dying in Colorado right now. Uh, he was in the, uh, first Gulf War, uh, subjected to a lot of the stuff over there. But with the opiates, uh, it's important to understand that, you know, I see people every day. Um, I had people that wanted to- to buy mine off me, and I'm like, "No way." I just flush them down the toilet. I did not want to put that into my body. So I did my research, um, and I have, since April is when I joined the O M P program, I wanted something a little more natural. I didn't want to become addicted to the opiates like so many of my other fellow veterans. And therefore, I chose a more natural path. I'm also have a kidney disease. Don't ask me where I got it. I have no idea. It's just one of those things that happens in life, um, which is one of the reasons why I had to bow out of the military. To this day, I am pain-free. I haven't slept in a decade. For me, if you've ever been in the military and understand what sleep deprivation is, try sleep deprivation along with nightmares. It tends to age you. I'm 39, if you can't tell. I mean, I look at about 50 or so. But, uh, um, I can now sleep at night. I've lost over 25 pounds. Um, I'm gaining my strength back. And, uh, it's taken some time, but it's- it was my choice. It was my choice to pay for my, uh, O M P card, just like everybody else in this town. So what we're talking about are people that choose a more natural path as opposed to an opiate path. They've paid extra to see a doctor. When I sat down with my doctor, I had one 1-inch folder from my M.D., and I had one 8-inch folder from the military. And I gave the doctor my list of problems and things that are wrong. The doctor looked through everything and said, "Yes, you are- you are more than valid." And, uh, even though I had to go through that process, I am very glad that I did. Keep in mind, Israel has been curing cancer for over 40 years. They also prescribe it to their soldiers. Anyone that's ever been in the U.S. military, um, at least in the past 20, 30 years, the Israelis are some of the best soldiers in the world, period. But they also have pain and nightmares and threat of constant war every day. But they chose a path naturally because they understand what drugs can do to you, the opiates. So I'm going to leave you with one last piece. Um, I mentioned that I got to have dinner with Sanjay Gupta. He has two very powerful specials. One is called "Why I Changed My Mind on Weed," which came out in 2013. And then he just had one that came out recently called "Doubling Down on Weed." And this is a gentleman who is one of the most, uh, sought-after doctors in the world as- as a neurosurgeon. He's also the chief medical officer for CNN. Originally in 2009, he said, "Now I- weed, now it has no- no- no medical benefits." And CNN sent him around the world for a year. He looked through the past 300 years of our country's laws and records. He went to Israel, went to South America, went to Europe, went to the Middle East, and went to Asia. And he studied every bit that he could. And he went on television, and he apologized to the American people that he was wrong and that he is sorry, that he didn't look further in the information and do his research, and that the government has been lying to the American people for the past 70 years about the benefits of it. So, go home, go on Google, look up YouTube, and watch the specials. My mother always told me, "The best thing to do is, if- if it's not there, educate yourself." And that's what I'm asking for you to do. Study a little bit more. And like I said, I'm- I'm an advocate for my fellow veterans. I have lots of veterans that are slowly dying, lots of pain, nightmares, and I do whatever I can to help them to- to fight this. And I'm living proof, um, that it can turn the clock around for you. So, if they don't have any questions, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And who else would like to speak? So the gal on the very back and then, um, on that side of the room would be next. Yes, sir. We'll get some folks from the back of the room this time.
I'd like to thank you for taking this opportunity to listen to the public comments. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I would also like to touch just briefly on the previous-
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lisa Grisham. G-R-I-S-H-A-M. I live at 1505 Walnut Street, southwest in Albany. I reside in Ward 1.
Thank you.
I unfortunately was unaware, as someone stated earlier, that the Child Abuse Prevention proclamation was on the agenda. I'm sorry. This is a very emotional issue, medical marijuana for everyone. And I had planned on taking emotion out of it and presenting you with what I believe are to be some facts and information. Unfortunately for me, that triggered something because I am a child abuse survivor. And I only wish that these people were here for children and not this issue. I am neither an O M P cardholder nor a business person involved, excuse me. I support the regulation and not the ban. We all know and we've heard about the medicinal value. There are other options. The ordinance could be for six months with a check on progress. You could choose to do nothing and take no stance and wait and see what happens. It's a moving target. Everybody agrees that. You could also choose to tax and regulate it, follow the money. This green business is an economic boom, and Colorado has shown that. They made over $1 million in taxes the first month alone. There was, if I can paraphrase, a quote from the Yumitilla County Commissioner in the paper today, and I think he said it best. Either way, this is a difficult decision. Just want to thank you again. Appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Michael Holloway, H-O-L-L-O-W-A-Y, 620 Peachtree Lane. Thank you for- for your time. I'm also a veteran, and I wish if it was legal, more people probably stayed in the military. Alcoholism and pills are a big problem. And cannabis would solve a lot of that and help a lot of vets. Well, I don't want to say what I do for a living because I hate to recusions, but I have a very- I deal with a lot of emergency stuff. I see a lot of bad, negative themes, and it helps. I am an O M P holder. I've been seriously injured, had half of my body broken, the other half dislocated, my back messed up, my face torn apart. And all they want to do is give me pills. I told them to keep their pills. One ball in the head would do same thing as five of your darn stupid pills. I hate them, hate them, hate them. I really wish the pharmaceutical companies had to follow the same rules that we do. I don't want a pharmacy next to my kid's school. I like to see less. I like to see Walgreens out of here. You know, that's my opinion. But, um, it just helps. And two, why wouldn't you want to do this? I mean, that's the question. Why would you not want to do it? I mean, as a taxpayer and as a voter, you are on watch right now. I am watching what you do, and you're going to lose my vote if you let this go. And I'm going to tell every single one I know not to vote for you guys. That's the bottom line. Because you're telling me, "No, you don't want to do this." You're telling me you'd rather support organized crime, a bunch of corporations that benefit and get rich and don't care about anything, pollute the earth. I mean, they're- they're just on and on and on. I'm not going to go on it, but I'm telling you, it helps. As a vet, I mean, I'd gone through the VA. They'd just say, "Well, you want some pills?" "No, I don't." "Well, you've changed your mind. Here's a card, and we'll just mail you a box." You know what I mean? That's flat out what they told me. And they're wrong. This whole thing's wrong. These individuals back here, our fine officers, they got better things to do. And two, as much as you travel around Oregon, work, it's- it really, it's hard. If you don't have any, you gotta go somewhere, play a game of pool, make a friend real quick, and then hope. When you could just go to a legal place like everything else and get a safe access, it's been tested, not lazy, that it's going towards the right people, not towards organized crime and same people smuggle women, children, and drugs. You know, and they don't care about the reason. I want that money out of their pocket and into our community. Thank you for your time. And I sure appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next, who would like to speak? So maybe someone on this side of the room this time?
African-American.
Who? Oh. Sir, did you want to? Yeah? Uh-huh. And then, how about, did you want to next? Yeah? Mm-hmm.
Good evening, councilmen, ladies and gentlemen. My name is J.D. Harris Jr. That's H-A-R-R-I-S. I live at 1537 Southeast Salem Avenue. Been here for 30 years. Um, I love officers. Luckily, well, not too many of them back there know me, but a few of them. I have, uh-
What'd you say your address was?
Well, you know we can't call this, don't you? I gotta speak.
Well, I- I heard 157.
1537.
Oh, 1537. Okay.
Sorry. I speak kind of fast. All right. Anyhow, um, I am from Ochsler, California, Ventura. And if anyone knows that area, it's, uh, oh, drug heaven. Opium, heroin, everything. I've been smoking marijuana since I was 16, 17. And the reason why is, I started. I played a lot of sports or had a lot of fights. But anyway, I have a lot of pain. Also, a lot of stress as African-American, you know how their situation was, how it still is somewhat. It would leave a lot of stress, and I was able to deal with a lot of the things that a lot of blacks would kill for, especially with the racist problem and the ideology. Anyhow, nevertheless, drugs are a very dangerous thing for everybody. I've done it myself, my family. I don't see a better avenue than to allow this regulation to happen. For one thing, it would minimize a lot of the crime. It would help keep these children, who are too young to understand what they're doing. We have adults out here doing things they don't even understand what or why. They're lost. We've lost world, the whole world seems to be. I'm not trying to mitigate that drugs are good. We need them for certain reasons. Their pain pills, even opiates, have the purpose. But when you use too much of a synthetic thing, when our bodies are naturally created by the God we all pledge allegiance to, uh, one way or another, our worship, who gave us this plant for our own use. He said it was good. Who would have said it isn't? We judge things without understanding. To understand something, you got to adventure. We never get the space without venturing, taking a chance. We don't know how medication works until we take a chance. We've been trying opiates and- and other drugs for so many years for either psychotic reasons or another. We certainly doesn't help. It's causing more problems, more degeneration in mind and body. We need to take a- a real look at what we're talking about and what we're seeing. We've been based with so many hypocritical ideas and lies and deception for so long because of lack of knowledge and not wanting to accept these things because of the strained belief that this is the way it is and that's the way it's going to be. Time is changing. We got to open our minds, our thoughts, to where we are now, where we're heading, where we come from. Because we don't get to understand what we really need, we're going to go right back to idiocy, to the Dark Ages, where our minds and our understanding is- is blank, nothing. There's nothing, no reality to it. We're just starting to live off this false illusion that everything that's out there is going to kill us or cause problems. The problem is how we think and how we use this, the benefit to our- to ourselves, to others who need it. Now, I admit, there's a lot of drug problems out here. I admit, I was one time a part of that. But the education is what we need. We got kids out here who are 12 years old doing methamphetamine, which is the most dangerous thing I think I've ever seen in my life, worse than heroin, I think, because it tears the body away. I used to work for Synthetech here in Albany. They make pharmaceutical drugs. I've seen how pharmaceutical drugs, I mean, I've seen the solvents they use. You have to wear respir- I think that's dangerous stuff. Now, if you're going to put this in your body after time, your body's going to start eating up from this chemical. It's going to just destroy itself. It's not a natural thing. It's helpful in its own form, but when you start putting other groups to it to make money on for your own satisfaction or for your own hip pockets and your grandchildren, we're trying to live for today. Tomorrow, it's going to have its own anxieties and its own whatever it needs to be. So for today, let's just say, let's open our heart to what is- that's natural, that's true, instead of blind to stuff with old, superstitious lies, chasing witches and saving witchcraft and stuff. That's what we're doing. Keeping this witch hunt going and going and going without no purpose. We're all wise people who have gone to school, education. So where is education at? Where we keep blocking something that we know is going to benefit everybody? Not only the economics, but our air we breathe too. I mean, because this plant does suck up a lot of carbon, which we put out, and it gets a lot of oxygen out. So it's a benefit. Truly, it is. We destroyed most of the nature out there and the plants we need for our own health, and we destroyed for progress, to build industries, to build commercial properties that somebody gets rich on. We're not trying to get rich. We just want to be peaceful in life and be able to enjoy life what we can. Life is short. It's too short to be ignorant, left in stupidity. Excuse my sense, but that's what it is. It's like we're not wanting to accept things. Some type of people do that because we're hard-nosed people. But we got to understand, we got to lighten up. We got to lighten up, ride with the wave, you know? Don't fight against it all the time. Sometimes, if you fight against it, you're going to wear yourself out. And what we've been doing all our life for the last 99 years is wearing ourselves out for no reason. People go to jail, have to pay fines, the kids are being lost because of CSD wants to take them because you're marijuana. to take them because you're marijuana, I mean. It's a must have, we've got to keep this thing out of children's reach, like anything. You know, it's sensible, it's reasonable, even alcohol. It could do damage, even to older folks, that's us. But we can't allow this to stop us from being, to excel ourselves, to follow our understanding and everything we see on this earth. We can't understand what's out there if we can't understand what's here and each other. So we've got to be more open up to each other and look at the situation, instead of closing our eyes and our minds and our backs, and saying, I don't want to accept it, because I just don't.
All right.
But we need this. So let us be able to accept this and allow us to, without hypocrisy or the stubbornness. It's only going to do better for us, not even worse.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Okay. And I think what's going to be really helpful too, for the council making this decision tonight, if we really kind of can focus on the ordinances that are in front of us. So, um, one's over regulating, um, in neighborhoods, and also if there's, for a dispensary, you know, compliance fee, and also whether to have a moratorium or not. So that'd be a little bit helpful, I think. Yeah. Okay? Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, you guys. I'm so proud of you. For every one of the people that you see out here, there are twenty-five or thirty or forty or more that could not make it for some reason.
Okay.
My name is Wendy Trent, T R E N T. My last is eight zero five five on my social security number. I live at three zero seven six two Southwest Larson Road in Lebanon, Oregon. I'm here as a veteran who has been in the service for over twenty years, after my father was in the service and did two tours in Vietnam, a tour in Korea, you know, the usual stuff. So I, I too am a veteran. I may be one of the first veterans that actually has on their medical records marijuana as one of the medications that I am supposed to take for my pain. And the reason that I have that is because I followed the rules. I hate it when people do not, don't you? And so I did everything they told me. I did the physical therapy, I did the medication, I did, I, I was taking six pain pills and all kinds of stuff like that. And finally, and I had been, I had smoked before in my life, I did inhale. I, um, I did. Boy, did I inhale. I inhaled, and then, you know, I went in the military, so then I needed to quit, and so that's how it is. So it's one of those, it's not addictive, it's habituated, habitual. Sorry, can't say the word. You'll just have to go with it. This was the first time in three years that I have been out of my house to a social, political, ever, political event. And the reason that I did that, because I have such PTSD anxiety-associated problems, is this is really important. See, we're sitting here talking, we're chatting. People are dying. People have cancer. People have five minutes. Someone just died, and they were able to eat before they died, because there's a group of people that take donations of cannabis to the hospitals and to the hospices, and they help patients make it through the last moments of their lives. I suffer from tremendous anxiety. I lost forty pounds. It was wonderful. I loved it. Yee-haw, forty pounds, that's a lot. But I was smart enough to wait, because you know, you lose weight, then you buy clothes, and then you gain the weight back, right? So that's exactly what happened. So I gained forty-five pounds, and I got this anxiety disorder. And really what it was, was the PTSD after thirty years finally making itself known in my life. And it affected me, and it affected my family tremendously. There were days where, there were weeks where I couldn't get out of bed at all. And my dogs just suffered and laid in my room with me because they knew that I was sick, and they wanted to keep me, they wanted to comfort me, which is exactly what my friends did. And everybody guided me. I didn't even know about this meeting. I didn't even know about what was going on. If I hadn't had friends that are part of the O M M P and, and, and directed me in the way that, uh, what was going on and how important it was, I would not be here tonight. And many of these other people, I have no idea how they heard about it, because I didn't. I heard about it from some person. I didn't hear about it from, um, the O H A bulletins, which I'm now signed up for and will hear about everything that's going on, and getting more involved and being able to do it. So my point is, first, I apologize. I would really like to recognize the Child Abuse Prevention Month, Aware, and Awareness Month. I think it's incredibly important, and I, I really appreciate that you've done that. And I hope that you're continuing to work in that direction. But the reason that I'm here is because you're talking about declaring a moratorium, and you're talking about restrictions in the areas. So basically, what I hear for the restrictions is, we are trying to make it so it's almost impossible, if not impossible, for you to find a location that meets all of the criteria, land, agriculture, school, homes, three hundred feet, one thousand feet, whatever it is like that. You're making the criteria such that people cannot meet them. And so that's very smart, and coming from an anti-medical marijuana sort of point of view. But the talking about that is just fine, and talking is great, but declaring a moratorium is a year of some, someone's life. Okay. Some people back here don't have a year. And every one of these people represents many, 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 many more people, not just here, but all over. And these people that represent these people that are dying don't have a year. Some people don't have a day. Some people don't have three months. Some people don't have any time at all. And I feel like, and I mean no disrespect, because I know that each of you has a full-time job, and you do everything that you can do, and that you also work to make the community better. And you are doing that. And it's amazing, the things that you've accomplished. But I don't think that we're clear on what it is that we're doing, and why it is that we're doing it, and that we have all the time in the world to decide what it is that we need to do. We don't have the time. People are dying while we're sitting on our butts, talking about whether or not we should have a moratorium, or we should do restrictions, or if we should do tighter restrictions. I personally, even if I had children, would not have a problem having a dispensary near my house. But the thing that I want to talk about is, I want to talk about testing. I want to talk about where testing came from. I want to talk about who it is that suggested testing. I've sent emails out to everybody that I can think of, and all of the people that my friends have let me know about, and the only name I get is Todd. Todd has testing facilities. Did he make the suggestion that the testing be done? Is testing being done in other places?
Trent, there is no testing. That's not a part of the ordinance for testing.
Okay, so then I won't, I won't be allowed to talk about that?
Yeah. I mean, it's, we've got people here that would like to still weigh in and talk, so it's best to focus on what we're actually...
Right, I understand. But the testing part of it is keeping us from getting, is going to keep us from getting access to the information that we need, to the, to the product that we need, because it raises the prices exponentially. And if one of the members of the committee that made the decision that testing was viable, then there's, I want to see this, I want to see the statement of disclosure that was signed by that person who owns those businesses in my hand, dated before it happened.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate that.
All right.
And I think, like I, so let me just say, as a veteran, I support the veterans, and I, I, I did everything they told me to do. None of it worked. I came off of the pain pills, went on medical marijuana, and I am ninety percent more pain-free than I was beforehand, and it's much safer now, and I know where my cannabis comes from. I trust it. I trust my grower. I trust the organizations that I use to process it. I believe that their ethics are very high, and that they are in it to help people, which is what my understanding is, that your committee is part of, helping the community to be better and to help the people that need the help. And we need the help, and we don't have the time.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and, yes, sir. And then, and then Scott?
Mhm.
Yes.
Hello. My name is Ross Broeffel, B R O E F F, like fast food, L E, and I live at twenty-nine twenty Railroad Street, Albany, Oregon. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-one. I was drug addict, in recovery, and I moved to, from Grants Pass to one of those halfway house situations where you get a job. You can either go to Burns, Oregon, or the coast. And I said, well, where's Burns, Oregon? So I went to the coast, got one of those deadliest catch jobs, you know, like you saw on TV, fishing, and started making a lot of money, and a lot of smart decisions. And, you know, what do you do when you go to treatment? Oh, sorry. You go to treatment, and you know, you do everything that you're supposed to, to become a citizen, and get back to being productive. And it's like, my wife at the time, she's a veteran as well, but at the time, she wanted to become a veterinarian, and so we chose Albany. And this is where I've lived, this is where I've raised my family, this is where I've seen a lot of friends come and go, you know, and it wasn't until about three years ago that my wife has PTSD really bad, and she can't get out and do much of anything. I've lost her, you know? And the last thing I ever thought was the marijuana or drugs was ever going to come back into my life, because I'd put that to bed. It didn't do me a whole lot of good when I was a kid. It just, it just didn't. It distracted me. But, uh, so I went to, where do you get it? So I looked on the web, you know, and got some sketchy dude coming up on a bicycle with a set of skills, you know what I'm saying? That's what I got. And so I looked at groups online, and I don't do the computers, she had to help me, and I looked and found a normal, right? But they never answered. So I figured, well, that must be normal, right? Anyway, I found O G F, Oregon Green Free, and I found people that donated. Everything is, is the way I think it should be with this whole, whole setup. If we could do like co-ops and stuff. And, you know, clones were free. The clones are the small, little plants that are cuttings off of large mother plants, so you get that same strain without any mills or genetic differences, you know? They're not variants, they're just a clone off of that thing. Not the same as if I cloned you. I wouldn't end up with another share of Copa. I would end up, you know, it's just hydroponics. And I learned how to do that. And so I could grow this medicine for my wife. And just in the meantime, you know, going back to the meetings, well, what do you do with your extra? Well, you donate it to the people that donated you. So I donate my extra at the Oregon Green Free meetings. And what I found is a lot of people have moldy medicine that makes you sick. My wife can't be around it, it has to be really clean. I have to pay attention to that. And that's what the dispensaries offer because of the laws put in. Now, to do, uh, to speak to what you asked, regulations and restrictions have to be done with anything, you know, let's guess, if we could get alcohol, but, you know, we know how that, that, I think this, the amendment, you know? It didn't work. You can't just put the genie back in the bottle. She's out. All right? Now, she's not as evil as the alcohol, but comparing one to the other is, is really not going to do anything to this. I think that having dispensaries say, well, you can't be within a school, yeah, that makes sense. But to say you can't be within three hundred feet of a residential area, to me, doesn't, because the Kana Kitchen is within a hundred and fifty feet, and, you know, Walgreens is like right across, you know, there's places by, there's a church by it. There's a, there's a place downtown in Albany that, that's people that, hubby for hire. Well, that's a business, and he's right in a residential, you know? I mean, I don't see a difference if it's, there has to be regulation, you know? You can't walk in unless you have a card, you have to be an adult, and this and that. Now, one of the reasons I moved to Albany was for the schools and for the opportunity to get jobs. There just wasn't any jobs in Coos Bay, Oregon, unless you wanted to be a fisherman, and I'd hurt myself on the boat, and I can't no longer fish. So I came here and was working in different, you know, places here. And what I think is, Albany has never been one of those towns that sits on its laurels. Seems to be a moratorium is just that. Well, let's just wait and see what they do over in, in, let's say, Jackson County, because they're having the same issue. Well, who cares about Jackson County? They want to succeed from Oregon and become the state of Jefferson. So I really don't care about Jackson County, or I'd live there. I live in Albany now. I really don't care much about Portman. And I'm sure there's, if there's Portlandia people here, then so be offended, you know? I just think that this is where I choose to be, and this is where I'm going to stay. This is a nice city. And if you're going to do a moratorium or even consider it, maybe consider, okay, that people like Albany Health, and there's another guy out of town, and you have Rhea's Kitchen, grandfather men, watch what they do, and say, okay, if we have to do this for six months, well, we'll see what these guys do. And if they start just blowing it all over the place, then it kind of lets you know that maybe it just won't work. But, you know, we're not ostriches, you know? I don't think, my head belongs in the sand, it sure doesn't. Because this was not something that I said five years ago that I want to do, is grow pot. There's a lot of risks, and a lot of people want to get the pot, you know? You got, you know, put up security cameras and all that stuff. And I'm thinking, you know, then to have it squashed by the city where I chose to come kind of smacks me as like, well, what the hell, I just wasted twenty years of, you know, good citizenship, you know, for, for this measure. And there's a lot of people that feel more passionate than I, you know? And, you know, that's about all I got to say. I mean, if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Right? Okay. Thank you. Okay, yeah, Scott? And then next will be the lady there with her hand up, and then I think the gentleman in the far back. I can see a hand up there.
My name is Scott Pearson, P I E R S O N, nineteen oh eight Northwest Cascade Heights in North Albany. I started out in the back of the room this evening. I really wasn't going to speak. I made my comments a couple of months ago in one of the work sessions, but I know the people here in the audience. I have no closer friend than Karen Chambers, who spoke earlier. I know the stories of the people, and I know the pain they go through. And it's very, very difficult to sit in the audience here and listen to their individual stories. At the same time, I do not believe that this is a debate on crime. I don't believe that this is a debate on opiates, or marijuana, or healthcare. I think that those are decided by other individuals. I believe we have a fact that our state has passed a law for Oregon medical marijuana. So I think those decisions have already been made. I think that you have a tough decision before you tonight. I don't think that you're going to win either way. I think that it's going to be unpopular, no matter what you do, or whether you choose not to do anything. But, you know, in management, we have to make tough decisions. As parents, we have to make tough decisions. And tonight, I think the decision before you is a business decision. From a business point of view, and trying to make a decision on what's in the best interest of Albany as a city, I think that there are significant things that you need to weigh. In my opinion, needed to weigh, is there a significant understanding of the issues before you? What I mean by that is, do we have enough information and facts to make a decision regarding the ramifications to our community, our youth, our business neighborhoods, law enforcement, and so forth? I believe that another element in the decision is, do we have a sense of urgency tonight? What I mean from that is, does the city of Albany need to be an early adopter before other sister communities in our area? We heard tonight one individual said that I think Albany might be the twenty-second. Do we need to be an early adopter? I think third, is there a critical city need in Albany that is not being addressed? Is there a sizable, critical need or hardship created for our citizens in seeking their legalized medical treatment? Next, do we have a stable legislative environment? I think that everybody would agree that our political landscape is going to change in the next year to eighteen months. I believe that most agree that there will be a marijuana proposition on our ballot in November. I believe that many people think that there may be changes on a federal level in the next two years with the election of a new president, and possibly a new attorney general, and whether or not we would choose enforcement in other states. I think what is clear is that there's going to be a lot of change in the next six months to eighteen months. Finally, I think our city attorney mentioned several months ago about the possible legal ramifications, and the wording, and how things were going. And I think that that's something that the council needs to understand and weigh and consider as well. So I know there's an emotional group here, and I feel for them, because I know many of them, and I know their stories, and, and I understand that. At the same time, I think you have a very, very tough decision to make a business decision in what is in the best interest of the city. And I hope that you weigh both sides, both the side with your heart and the side with your mind, that sometimes an unpopular decision is the best decision for the individuals. I don't think that you are stopping people if you elect to have a moratorium. You are not stopping people from seeking medical aid. You are not stopping people from getting opiates. You are not stopping crime, and you are not causing people to die. You're just saying, we're not going to create a business opportunity in our city. So I hope you weigh both with your mind and your heart. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, I think the lady in the, the black t-shirt? Yeah.
My name is Roland Smith. I live at 3133 North Shore Drive in Albany, Oregon. This topic has, has kind of raised my interest, because I have a grand, or a daughter-in-law that uses medical marijuana for scoliosis. I think the question here tonight is, is cannabis a real medication? And if it is a real medication, why was cannabis made illegal? First of all, I'd like to tell you that I did some research on this. There are two different types of cannabis. There's the cannabis that these people out here are talking about that is medical cannabis, or can be ingested. There's also industrial cannabis. During the 1920s and 30s, it was common for doctors to prescribe cannabis for various different diseases and, and problems. The cannabis was distributed to pharmacies, like Target Pharmacy. In the early 13, or 1930s, a wealthy man by the name of Andrew Mellon was treasurer for DuPont Paint Company. Mr. Mellon later became the U.S. Secretary of Treasury, but was still heavily invested in the DuPont Company. Mr. Mellon appointed one Mr. Andrew Ansinger to the Federal Bureau of Narcotics. As soon as Mr. Ansinger was appointed, he put together a massive film program for the schools in this nation on the evils of the reefer, marijuana. These films that he put together, and I, I hate to tell you this, but I'm old enough that I actually saw one of these films when I was in grade school. But these films were basically telling the kids of our country that, boy, if you smoke marijuana, you were going to become a violent, evil, sex-driven scoundrel, you know? They were ridiculous. The same period that this was going on, a gentleman by the name of William Hurst started a printed, tried against marijuana, marijuana smoking. They really wanted to stop pot smoking. Or did they? Actually, what was going on was the fact that the, the people that were connected with DuPont were pushing this. The reason for it was because DuPont had come up with a substance called nylon, which was in direct competition with hemp rope, okay? And they didn't want to be in competition with hemp rope. So they went after medical marijuana, or what we consider medical marijuana now, or, or smoking marijuana, because they couldn't really go after the, the industrial marijuana and say, well, you guys got to quit growing that, because we don't want you to compete with us anymore. Mr. Hurst had very extensive lands of timber, and he was in competition with the industrial hemp, or industrial marijuana, because they found out that they could make very cheap paper out of, or paper pulp out of the industrial marijuana. But here again, they couldn't go and say, you guys got to quit growing that, because we don't want to have to compete with you. And he was concerned about his timber holdings. So what they went after is the smoking, or the, the medical end of the situation. Okay, why don't doctors still use medical marijuana? In 1937, the federal government wanted a part, excuse me, wanted a part of action that they were always, my stuff all mixed up here. In 1937, the federal government passed a marijuana tax. They were levying this tax against the, the doctors and pharmacies that were prescribing and supplying medical marijuana, okay? Along with this tax, they also required a great deal of something that bureaucrats love, is a lot of bookwork and a lot of paperwork. So the pharmacies and the doctors just quit prescribing marijuana. You know, they just didn't want to put up with this nonsense. That is basically the reason that medical marijuana is now illegal. It doesn't have anything to do with the fact that they were, people were smoking it, it was because these people were going after the industrial marijuana, not the medical marijuana. I don't know if any, any of you understood a word that I said, but I hope so, anyway. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Okay, folks, so it's been, yes, and the gentleman in the back, go ahead and come on forward, but it has been an hour of testimony. We've gone through 11. Well, this man in the back's been waiting too. Right, so, okay, so hang on just a sec. So it's been 11 folks, and it's been one hour. So I think if you can really pertain to whether you just state your name, and whether you're for or against the ordinances, that's what we're here for this evening. So I know we love hearing the stories, but we're never going to have enough time to hear everyone's story this evening. So if you can just really pertain it to the ordinances, okay? Yes, sir.
My name is Vernon Forty. My last name is R., spelled F-O-R-T-Y. 2485 Columbus Street, southeast here in town. I lost my son to suicide here not that long ago. And I was on lots of drugs. And I recently started the medical marijuana, and it's helped me. I wouldn't even be here, I'm telling you. And please, look at the clothes. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Forty. So I think the lady, though, I had called her earlier in the, in the dark shirt, I thought you were waving, you're wanting to speak to Mr. Smith, so... And then ma'am, you can be able to speak next, yeah?
My name is Bonnie Wilkins. I live at 1010 14th Avenue, Albany, Oregon, 97 through 21.
Southeast or southwest?
I am for the land for us to grow on, so that we can make the medicine to help the people get better. I am living proof, one year yesterday, that, you know, opiates brought me to rock, rock bottom, hit rock bottom. My doctor was giving me, I was taking oxycodone, 30 milligrams, I'm talking, I was getting 180 of them, plus I was getting, I mean, so many that I was just amazingly horrible. And I was able to get, I mean, I had to go to a rehab to get off of them, but I was able to get the pain to finally get better. My sister said, Bonnie, try this, this is going to help you, you know? Because the, the pain was still there. Even though I went to rehab, and I thought, well, people live with pain every day. Well, I broke my back. I went off a thousand-foot cliff, I was a duck shot back window. However, that's, that's my story, but, but the main thing for me is that my mom, she went totally blind. And she's in, she's a diabetic, number one diabetic, she's real, real bad. And she went totally blind from her diabetes. And I says, you know, Mom, let's, let's try pot, what have we got to lose? Well, my mom has her eyesight back now. And she doesn't do any other drugs except for her insulin, but she smoked her pot, and she did her RSO, and she can see now. So you can never tell me that it does not cure something, because I know for a fact that it cured my mom's sight. And it also got me away from things that would have killed me within another month. So I am definitely for, give us the land to make the medicine.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am. And then next will be the gentleman with the glasses, with your hand up, yeah?
This is the first time I've ever spoken in front of public, so...
Yeah, go ahead and be seated in. The microphone picks you up better if you're...
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Kathy Serp. I live at 4870 Northwest Fur Place, Albany, Oregon. I live in Benton County.
Last name?
S.R.P.
S.R.P. is your last name?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wow. S.R.P.
So nobody's going to forget that one.
Yeah.
So basically, what I want to start off with is, we all stood up and said the pledge allegiance to the flag. And the last half of, you know, last section of that was, "One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." And when you're, when you want to put an ordinance, to put a moratorium to, to stop a law that was created by the state, so to me, that seems like you're, you're putting a divide there with, with people doing that. And then, okay, sorry.
You're fine.
Excuse me.
You're doing good.
So, I mean, that, that's, you know, the way I feel as far as that goes. And then, you know, liberty, this, it's also, you know, it's taking liberties away from a certain section of people, and saying, you, you don't get liberty, but this other group, you know, you can have liberty. So, you know, whether you have a liquor store, or a mini mart, or a pharmacy, or, you know, a gambling facility like, you know, Foxton, you know, they, they have the liberty to have that business. And I don't know what the ordinances are for them, as far as how far away they have to be from a residential area, or how far they have to be away from a school, you know? But, I mean, it's easy for a child to go into a mini mart, you know, and steal alcohol and cigarettes, and, you know, or to go into a pharmacy. I don't think that they have, you know, with, with the dispensary businesses, they, they're going to be required to have almost like a, I believe, like a, a bank safe vault to store the medication. They have to have 30 days worth of film that they have to, you know? The, the regulations that the state has set forth for them are already insurmountable, you know? It's, I don't know if that's the correct term to use. And, excuse me, you know, and the rules, you know, that have been made through the OHA, that they have to follow, you know, they, they can't be within 1,000 feet of each other, they can't be within 1,000 feet of a school. So in, in my opinion, I believe that the city should just let it be as it is, as the state has decided, and see what happens. Let's not, let's not jump on, you know, a bandwagon of, let's put more regulations and more fees, and, you know, let's, you know, make it even harder for people. Wait and see, you know? I mean, some of these people have already been here, you know, and they've been doing business, and there hasn't been any trouble, you know, at all. There's been, you know, they've been fine, they've been quiet. You know, I don't see where there, there has been, they haven't had theft problems or, or anything. And, and with a regulated dispensary industry, it helps individuals as they're getting their medical marijuana card to have an access before, because they don't have a grower right away, because of the way the laws are written. So I'm, I'm just asking you to please not put more stumbling blocks in the way.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Michael D. I live at 927 20th Avenue, southwest. I've lived here for eight years.
Can you spell your last name? Is it just D-E-E?
That's spelled D-E-E.
D-E-E, okay, thank you.
You know, I could, I'm a disabled vet, and I could give stories about, you know, how marijuana's helped me, and how it's, it's real medicine. I don't think any of you doubt that it's really medicine, at least for some of us. But the concern here is that the, the putting in the moratorium, or, or more restrictions. And the worry, I would say, for anyone to want to do that would be, the only harm really that can come from marijuana is basically young people using it. I, I think that it's harmful for teenagers to use marijuana, unless it's for their own health, if they got cancer or whatever. But, but that, that seems to be the big concern, and frankly, I don't think any of these dispensaries will have any, any effect on the availability to kids. I think kids nowadays, if they want marijuana, they're going to get it, they can go to the, they can go to, they can get it to their high school, they can get it to the Boys and Girls Club, they can get it at the skate park, they can get it wherever, they, they all know where to get it. And then they know who to talk to if they don't know right off where to get it. So I don't think these dispensaries are going to be any concern whatsoever for, in that regard. And, you know, and I don't really like the way some people think of these dispensaries as some kind of a recreational thing, like a bar or something. I'm really offended by that. It's, it's medical, it's the same thing as a pharmacy, except the state has segregated marijuana to have this own separate thing. Until the laws change someday, that's, that's what's available to us now. And I just want to express my concern that, that the availability of the medicine should be available to the over 1,500 medical marijuana patients in this county. I, I don't know that, how many are in the city itself, but, but we do need access, you know? It's the only way that people that can't grow for themselves, or can't grow enough for themselves, to, to, to access more legally. And I don't think we should cut off people in this, in this city from, from that access that the state, the state has made sure to supply the rules necessary to keep these businesses safe, so that, you know, they're not going to be robbed any, probably way less often than the, how many robberies they've had of the pharmacies here in this town, of people that are addicted to OxyContin and stuff. People that use marijuana don't do these kind of things, you know? My understanding is two-thirds of all heroin addicts got their addiction, their opiate addiction through their pharmacy. They, they, they get, they get the addiction to their pain pills, and then they get cut off from the pain pills, and they get desperate, and they end up on heroin. So this is a great alternative to that. I don't want to suck up too much time, and I think I've said what I need to say. I'm, I'm against both ordinances, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. D. All right, and next, so, yes, sir, in the back, and how many others are wanting to still speak? So, okay, it looks like about six, seven.
Dick's on page three.
And if we can kind of focus on the policy piece, we'd appreciate it, so...
I want to thank you guys for taking a minute to talk with me, or let me talk to you. I would tell you that I am in Ward One, which is Mr. Collins and Mr. Olson's districts, okay? I moved here from Florida 18 months ago.
Okay, state your, state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is John Randall. I live at 156 Northwest Cherry Lane in Albany, that's R-A-N-D-L-E. I moved here from St. Augustine, Florida, 18 months ago, because my brother was diagnosed with leukemia. So we had to figure out what to do to help him. I have two plates, two bars, and four screws. I'm a disabled American veteran. And I've been, in Florida, it's illegal, so when I would go to find medicine in Florida, because I couldn't take pain medication, I just couldn't, you can't stay on that for 20 years, it don't work. So, but I would have to go to the crack house... So, but I would have to go to the crack house to buy my medicine, because it's illegal in Florida, okay? So, what I'm telling you guys is that, think about this moratorium, okay? Because you will turn the people that jump through all the state hoops to get our O M P cards, okay, into criminals. Because we'll have to go to the meth houses and places like that to find our medication, because we won't be able to go to the store and buy it. We won't be able to. You guys are gonna, if you vote that way, we will not be able to purchase it here. I mean, it's an important thing to a lot of us, okay? So, please give that consideration. Don't turn us into frickin' criminals. We don't deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Okay, and next, yes, ma'am, standing up.
My name's Mickey Fluckiger, that's with an M, and last name is F as in Frank, L U C K I G E R. It's not as easy as the last name.
Thank you for spelling that one, yes.
I live at thirty thirty Oxford Avenue, Southeast, here in Albany. I am not a cardholder, but I am a caregiver for a cardholder. Like the last gentleman, my husband has been through thirty years of the medical prescription meds, and you cannot stay on those meds forever. And he did fight going on to medical marijuana for a number of years. I thought it was interesting tonight, when I came in here and read the vision statement for the city council as "A vital and diversified community that promotes a high quality of life, great neighborhoods, balanced economic growth, and quality public services." And then, you had your national service recognition. And I would like to recognize all of the people here in this room, because one thing that the medical marijuana laws have required is that most of the work be done on a volunteer basis. And so, all of the people that are in here are providing a needed service. And I am very opposed to the moratorium. This is illegal medication in the state. All the people that have paid their dues and got their cards should be treated as legal citizens, doing and able to access a service that is legal in the state of Oregon. I actually would be for certain restrictions. I am not opposed to the city having some sort of a business fee. I think that makes sense, as far as if you're going to have somebody go around and regulate or inspect any of the dispensaries, which I think is very important that you do that. It makes sense that there should be a fee to cover the hours and time that is required for the servants to go around and inspect those businesses. So, I would certainly support that. And any of the fees that we would pay to the dispensaries, I think that should cover the fees that those businesses are required to pay to the city. I will say that we had doctors that were asking us if we would be interested in going this route and not coming from a drug culture. We've spent the last three years educating ourselves, but it's been a very steep learning curve, because there were not the services available in the local area, so you pretty much had to travel to Salem, Eugene, or Portland to really talk to people or get information. So, having a service like this in the local community, I think, would be wonderful. And it would really help those people that are newly diagnosed to have access to good information. So, I would say no to the moratorium, but if you can come up with some reasonable regulations, I would support that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, next, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Chad Smith. I reside at eleven oh five Bain Street, Albany, Oregon. I am a caregiver for a patient. And what you guys are doing right here now is trying to put a ban on essentially the pharmacy for medical marijuana patients. And it's gonna put further financial hardship on people. Most of these people have already paid out thousands of dollars for medical bills. I mean, I'm sure you guys understand what medical bills are, everybody gets those. Now, you're asking for us to travel further away from where we live, which is gonna cost money every single trip, on top of the cost of whatever is encumbered, and continue down that road. That just makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. I am completely opposed. I'm sure that a lot of these people back here are, I think it's just time for us to stand up and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joseph Munoz. My last name is spelled M U N O Z. I live in four zero three five Spring Avenue, Northeast. I just wanted to say briefly, as a young adult here, I was raised and lived here for about eight years. I just wanted to bring up the fact that these dispensaries aren't going to be introducing marijuana to children and high school age students. Like, I know, I know, living here, I've, living here, there's just, there's always been marijuana, marijuana's always gonna be around us. It's a fact. And I think that the argument against these dispensaries being made, that our kids are gonna be around this stuff, is just, it's faulty. Marijuana's here, we're gonna be around it, it's a fact of the matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? So, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Kokil Rex, and it's R E X. I live at five seventy-five Burkhart Street, Southeast. I'm absolutely against the moratorium. I am for some regulations, as long as they are reasonable, as stated before. And I want to say that because of medical marijuana, I was able to get off of massive amounts of painkillers. I'm able now to work twenty-five hours a week as a tutor. I'm able to get people through mathematics and through seventeen different subjects. I'm able to get up in the morning, I'm able to be a positive influential member of our society, and see people graduate from college, see people learn mathematics, see people open up their eyes. And if it weren't for the medical marijuana, I could not get up in the morning. So, thank you. The dispensary here has allowed me the ability to no longer smoke anything. I do not inhale anymore, I used to. I don't even inhale cigarettes anymore. And that has been because I've been able to use medibles and because my life has changed. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, anyone else? So, Mr. Clausen? June, did you want to speak too?
Jim Clausen, one four zero three fifteenth Albany. I don't have a problem with medical marijuana. I had a friend that had MS, who took interferon, and it was the only thing that helped her from the side effects of the interferon. So, there are medical benefits to medical marijuana. What I have a problem with, with dispensaries, is the way that it doesn't end run around the normal route for dispensing of drugs. Most, most, prescription drugs are all regulated. Marijuana is regulated in that it's against the law. If it, it's the only, it's the only prescription drug out there that has no regulation of its use. You're not prescribed X amount for X amount of time, and then your prescription runs out, although you have to renew your card every, what, two years or something like that? Yeah, one year? Yeah. But there's no, there's no regulation of the amount that you use. It's totally up to the individual. You don't do that with opiates, if you're legally abiding by them. The, I think that they should be handled by pharmacies and pharmacists, rather than And I heard the business aspect of it was mentioned tonight. And one thing I question on that is the city's response to the business in future use. Right now, marijuana is against federal law. And where do we, where does the city council look at federal law and abide by federal law, and where does it not? How is that gonna affect business? What law is law and what law isn't law? And that, to me, is really kind of the crux of the whole matter. If it's, or do we abide by federal laws, or do we not? Do we just ignore the federal laws that we don't want and not ignore the other ones? It's, it may seem like a moot or a funny question, but it's really a predicament that you have to look at when you're deciding this, because it's gonna affect things. I want to jump to another topic here, right now. Lars Larson did an interview with Dr. Mike Nelson. He's the head of forestry at OSU, the forestry department at OSU. He's spent the last twenty years looking at wetland stuff, basically, how it affects fish, and he concentrated mostly in creeks. The, and he found that up in the higher elevations, where the water's cold, the fish were smaller and less in number. And in the lower altitudes, in the flatlands, where the water was warmer, the fish were bigger, and they adapted to the warmness of the water, for the most part. There were other, there were some areas where it was exceptionally hot, and they didn't adapt so well there. But, when, as I listened to this Dr. Mike Nelson, head of the Department of Forestry at OSU, speak about this, I couldn't help but think of the sewer plant here, and the rigamarole that was done over the one degree temperature rise in the thing. And his studies showed, over the past twenty years, that the fish adapt very well, unless it's very extreme. One degree was not extreme, in his opinion. And that we could've saved us, what, sixty million dollars on that, on that thing? Or thirty million that went towards the, thirty million went towards the water, Talking Water, did it not?
No, it didn't.
All total, with the federal dollars that we got and the city, what the city got out?
Thirteen million total for Talking, fourteen for Talking Water.
That we, that we put out. Federal government put out more, some, and the state put out some?
No, that's included.
As a total cost, it was fourteen million.
Okay. Well, overall, the whole thing, the whole thing was, that's a lot of money anyways. And had Dr. Nelson come up with that study a little earlier, or had that study that was done been questioned more thoroughly, we could've saved quite a bit of money. Thanks.
Okay, all right, and June?
Hi, my name is June Buschting, B U E C H T I N G. I live at twenty-four eighty-seven Fortieth Avenue, Southeast, Albany. I do not support the moratorium on dispensaries in the city of Albany. I'd like to tell you just a little story about my sister, who was my patient, I was her caregiver, about two and a half years ago. You go and you get your medical marijuana card, you're supposed to list a grower, but if you're not involved in the culture, you don't know who to put down. You don't know where to get medicine. But all of a sudden, you're able to have it, but you have no way of getting it. So, we had a friend take us to a little backdoor dispensary up in Portland, operating, I'm sure, kind of in a gray area, but we needed the medicine, because my sister needed to get off narcotics. So, we put our little, what do they call it, consultation fee in, so that we could get some medicine and take home. And we got about two weeks' worth of medicine. From there, we had to look around to try to find some people, so we could get more medicine. But again, if you're not involved in the culture, you don't know the lingo, because there's certain lingo you use, or the red flags go up and they won't talk to you anymore. You know, you gotta learn words like compensation and donation, and they turn and they run the other way when you say, "Can we buy some?" And, "Oh, we don't, we can't do that, we can't use those words." And it got, it was really frustrating. And so, we were getting little packages of, a couple of buds here and there from people, and just basically trying to throw stuff together, when I decided, "Well, heck, I'll grow it for you." And I didn't know anything about it. I'd never grown it before, but I grew tomatoes. So, it took about three to six months before we actually had some flowers that she could use. It has taken two years for me to produce enough medicine that I can make her the cannabis oil that she needs for smokeless medicine. This is the medicine that you hear about, that the children are using, similar medicine created, it takes a lot of flowers to create that oil. Now, if we'd have had a dispensary that we could've gone down the street to with our cards, it would've been a lot easier for us to access medicine, quality medicine, that has taken us quite a while to get to the point where we are now, you know, in the groove. But like some people said, you have someone with cancer, they don't have that much time. They're too sick to learn how to grow. They're too sick to learn how to make preparations. That's why I also support the Cana Kitchen. And I do not support the closing of the Cana Kitchen because of the service that it provides to people that are using smokeless medication. I do not consider the Cana Kitchen a dispensary. I don't believe it should go under the dispensary rules. I am a caregiver, I'm a grower, and I am now a patient of medical cannabis. And I do not support either one of these measures. What's the correct word?
Ordinances.
Ordinances. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, June. Okay, is that, I think about it? Yes, ma'am?
Quick.
About last, because I think a lot of folks probably want to hear what a decision might be.
Hi, I want to thank you guys all for your time. I know it's been pretty trying already, it's pushing nine o'clock. And I hadn't planned on speaking, but I did have a reiteration to the gentleman before. My name is Danielle Die. I live at two oh two Jackson Street, Southeast, here in Albany. I've been living in Albany since August of last year. I've been a patient of medical marijuana since two thousand and six. When I got my card in two thousand and six, I had absolutely no idea what to do with it. None. I went three years of having this card and paying my fees and seeing a back shop doctor, literally came down to a hotel in Bend, Oregon, from Portland, and that's the way that that was ran. What's happened since then is leaps and bounds to what the O M P Foundation has done and OHA. As far as there being regulations for medical marijuana, I can show you guys a packet. There's a packet of regulations that we have to follow every day, to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do by law, what we're doing by you guys at the city. We've done everything that we can. My daughter has epilepsy, she is a minor, she's sixteen years old. Five years ago, she started having seizures, not knowing why, saw pediatrician, neurologist, all the good things we did, tried several different pharmaceutical medications, couldn't figure out why she couldn't stop having seizures. Well, under the care of a medical doctor and a pharmacy, several different pharmacies, um- Well, under the care of a medical doctor and a pharmacy, several different pharmacies, come to find out she was having seizures because of a medication she was being described, prescribed. A specific pill for anti-seizure medication was causing her to have seizures every day. And that was two years of a doctor regulating us, of a pharmacy regulating us, of me picking up prescription medication every week for my child. I've never used cannabis with my daughter, however. Because of pharmaceuticals, she is now having severe vision problems. Her IQ is suffering. She is now in special education. It has just been a horrible nightmare going through the medical, the legitimate medical profession, if you will, because there's such a stereotype on, on what we do here with cannabis. I really only wanted to say that because I was, I was very offended by someone making the statement that the medical marijuana is not regulated because there are so many rules that we go through. We, we, we read your guys' regulations every day to make sure that we are following what we're supposed to be doing because there is that one day that somebody could come in and say, hey, you screwed up today. And we don't want to do that. We want to be the, the business that comes up, and you guys can look at us and say, hey, you know what, we made a great decision. And this is the business that we have to show for it. We want to be, we want to be what other cities look like, look at and say, hey, you know what, Albany's got their act together. They know what they're doing. Their city council supports them, and we're, we're following all the regulations that you guys want, all of us, including Cana Kitchen and everybody else. None of us have ever had a problem here. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So I think that was it. So unless there's a point that has been missed that, that somebody feels that needs to be out, but I think that was it. Okay? All right. And that is it for the Business for the Public piece. And so I think right now we will, does council want a break?
Yes.
Yes, I think we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Okay? And then the ordinances will be next on the agenda.
Actually, it would be the first reading of the ordinance, but we do have a, the first reading that we'd be looking at, this would be declaring a moratorium on the medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency. So, council, oh, we're closed now for no more.
I know that you're closer.
Yeah, for comments.
But I don't understand what an emergency event was, and nobody can tell me.
Okay, so what, the emergency clause is it takes effect immediately, other words, ordinances are a 30 days. So, but to be able to enact on the moratorium, if the council chooses that route, this has to be in place because the state says it has to be done by May 1st. So, that's why we would have an emergency clause that it would be immediately, immediately signed, and then it would go into effect on that. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, a lot of it is kind of confusing on, you know.
I do it every day.
Right, I know, so, yeah. So, did you want the first reading, or do you have thoughts, or you want to start off talking?
I'd like to have some discussion on the issue.
Okay, all right. Did you want to start off discussing that, or what would you, council like to do? Bessie, you?
I would move that the ordinance be read.
Well, it has to be read first. Do you want it read first?
Read first, yes, there you go.
Okay.
I was missing that part.
Last time we did that, we fooled around and finally decided we couldn't have any discussion on the issue.
No.
No, we would, once it's read, once she moves to read it a second time.
Well, in point of order, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but Robert Rules of Order requires that a motion be made before it even be discussed.
That's what I understand, too.
We, yeah, we don't have to according to our charter following Robert's, but go ahead, Sean, and read the first reading.
Okay, so, I don't know, make sure council's asking me to read the ordinance, the first ordinance for the moratorium, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. An ordinance to the city of Albany, Oregon, declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency.
All right.
Okay, move that the ordinance be read a second time entitled on.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, all right, it won't be read a second time. So, with that process, this doesn't happen very often. So, since it didn't get a unanimous decision to read it a second time, it has to be held over to our next meeting. And with that, we can, we will not be having any discussion on this ordinance at all, because it was not read for the second time. So, you have to hold that over to the next meeting, unless you want to, unless you want to rescind your no vote.
I guess I'd look to the city attorney, I believe we can discuss it.
Right, I believe that tonight, what we can't do is, we can't adopt the ordinance tonight unless it was read a second time. We can discuss it tonight, but we're not allowed to adopt it until the second reading, so.
We haven't done that in the past, but if you want to discuss it, you can. But we haven't done that in the past.
Well, Mayor, it seems reasonable. There are, there are a lot of folks here who would like to hear what, well, I mean, the people have been giving testimony for a long time, and they'd like to hear what people have to say.
I agree. So, if you want to, you can. We don't, we haven't, but you can.
Sure.
And this is an example, I mean, if we had read the other ordinance proposing regulations tonight, there could be discussion on that, on that ordinance, and talk about what type of regulations you would want, and then you could direct staff to come back with that ordinance, and be read this, you know, and then we would read it a second time and vote on that actual ordinance with the, with the new language or the language that you decided on tonight, so.
Okay, so, what would you like to talk about on this first ordinance?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that, is it understood by the people that voted no, that it's just that reading the first ordinance and seconding it allows the discussion? It doesn't mean, you know, that it's passing or anything?
It's been around a long time, they know.
Okay, it doesn't seem like it.
Yeah, so, so, if you wanted to discuss then, sure.
Yeah, I have a cousin who uses medical marijuana. I am cognizant of the fact that he gets some help for his glaucoma. But I guess what I would point out here is, we have, the state came back with a law that went on top of the current law, and you can still grow. You can have, what, six plants or a number of mature plants, and then some juvenile plants, or small plants, or whatever that is. Most of you, I bet, drove here tonight. If you didn't drive here, you live pretty close. Medical marijuana in dispensaries is going to be available in Corvallis. I mean, there are, and I don't know how many passed, they were talking about having five, and I don't know how many have gotten through the system. But no one would be denied the ability to get marijuana.
That's not true.
You can't, you can't drive to Corvallis?
Why should we have to?
Wait, oh, just a minute.
Bottom line.
A point of order here, so now, after we had closed the public comment, this is the time for the council to be able to weigh in on their opinion, too, just like everybody else did. So, I would, you know, we really appreciate if you just refrain from any comments on that, okay?
Mayor, I apologize, I was, I should not have directed a comment to people. But, but the bottom line is, right now, people can go to, well, I say right now, when dispensaries are open, people will be able to go to dispensaries in Corvallis, or in Salem, or, I don't know what other, what other places. So, my feeling is, we don't know where this is going to go. I think, I think Scott said that the legislature is divided. I don't think the legislature at this point knows what they're going to do. I know that they're going to work on it some more, I've been told that. I want to get, at the very minimum, I want to get past November, because November may make the whole thing moot. I don't want to start something and then have to stop it. So, with the ability of people to get their medical marijuana, I mean, they can get it the way they got it before, certainly. And recognizing that people do not have something to consume when they first get their card, going to another location would give you, give them that information, give them that medicine. So, I would be in favor of a moratorium.
All right, Ray?
Yeah, I've just got three short paragraphs that I'm going to read. They're pretty sharp, very intentional. We've been discussing this since last November. I'm going to read them, and then I'll basically shut up and we'll go from there. "I just don't know how we can look folks straight in the face and tell them that we do not want them to be allowed to have local, safe access, but it's perfectly acceptable to have them go back underground to a totally unregulated process and/or drive to another town. It just seems a classic NIMBY reaction, not in my backyard." Straw man argument, but I believe that the analogy is still true. "The state of Oregon says it's perfectly acceptable to allow folks to kill themselves via assisted suicide, and yet that is being held as being very compassionate and caring. Yet, we're saying that that is unacceptable to allow folks to alleviate their pains via a local, safe, regulated process. The irony and hypocrisy is palpable to me. To my peers on the dais, I do suggest you try and look into the eyes of every constituent in the audience and tell them that they do not deserve the right to locally acquire state-approved and medically-approved remedies for their suffering. I believe that taking that position is unconscionable and morally indefensible."
Thank you. Part of our rules of order, too, is no clapping, so. Yes, okay, Floyd, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would have several comments. Some of you may know, and some of you may not, four years ago, I lost my daughter to cancer. She was in a different state. I don't know whether she tried to use a form of medical marijuana or not. Saying that, I have some great sympathy that when a drug is of benefit, then people ought to find an access. I am very upset with the conflict between our federal and state government, and having them shove the burden down to the local government to find what is a reasonable answer. If I were king, I would make it a controlled substance, I'd put it under the FDA, and I'd run it through pharmacies, and there would be a QAQC program, and it would be a legitimate drug that is regulated. People would have access to it, their doctors would know what the uses are, and the patients could gain the benefit. On the other side, I look at what happened in 2010, when the question was put before the voters. Fifty-six percent of Oregonians said no, forty-eight said yes. In Lynn County, sixty-three percent said no, with thirty-three percent saying yes. Benton County was much closer, fifty-point four to forty-nine point six. So, in 2010, the voters spoke. After that, the legislature got in the mix of things, and in my opinion, made the water very, very muddy. As I read the papers, Salem and Eugene have been approved. Corvallis has five pending. I understand there's 21 cities with moratoriums, 14 with regulations, two counties that have considered moratoriums, or have moratoriums, and more considering. I look at the fact that every one of our local law enforcement officials, including the district attorney, have asked us to have a moratorium. The moratorium as proposed is for till May of 15. I don't know what's going to happen after May of 15. Something's going to happen in November, in my opinion. At the very least, we're going to have experience with those dispensaries that aren't licensed and open and operate in whatever communities they're in. If we're going to have reasonable standards, I would much prefer those reasonable standards be based upon actual performance and not speculation. This instance, I don't think Albany should be on the cutting edge. I think we ought to have the moratorium till at least after the first of the year, maybe till May 1, and then we monitor and see what the effect is, we see what happened in November, and we then make some very smart moves.
All right, okay, Dick?
Yeah, I was hoping Mr. Smith would stuck around. I think he and I had similar experiences, and he might have been the only person in the room older than I am. So, yeah, I, too, in junior high, back, oh, when was that, 1951 or so, we had a little session in the health period about dangerous drugs. And I think in Parkland, Washington, I think they may have been a little too straight-laced to talk about how dangerous it was in turning me into a sex pervert, but instead, as Mr. Smith experienced when he was probably in junior high or high school. Instead, they, they mentioned that it might twist my mind to the point where I'd feel like jumping over a boxcar. And that still stands out in my mind as what a ridiculous thing to suggest. So, that was my introduction to pot. And over the years, I've been curious as to what the real reaction would be. But unfortunately, I'm in the wrong age group to have peers who are doing that stuff, and so I never have. I'm still pure as the driven snow as far as pot is concerned. However, doing a little, looking around to see where the idea of the pot, or marijuana, I shouldn't say pot, marijuana is such, such a bad thing, I came upon a, a thing on the, in Google, and you might want to look this up yourself. And the, the title of the Google is, "What role did William Randolph Hearst play in making marijuana illegal?" Some of you know who William Randolph Hearst was. I think he was the prototype for Rupert Murdoch. He had a newspaper empire, and he didn't shrink from passing information that may not have been just somewhat off of just plain illegal. You're shaking your head, yes. So, I found this fairly, fairly short thing, and I passed it out to you council people. And I'll have to apologize for the very small print, but not being very good with computers, I didn't know how to expand it if there is a way, and so, I think I'll read it. And it says, "Hearst was a newspaper tycoon, and he launched a propaganda campaign against cannabis," marijuana in quotes, "declaring that its use incited criminal behavior and insanity. He owned a substantial interest in the timber industry at the time, and DuPont Chemical was perfecting a new chemical treatment for wood pulp to make paper. Now, hemp paper, i.e. paper made from marijuana plants, was better than wood pulp for making paper in that it was more durable, and more recyclable, and without the use of any chemical treatment." While lived out playing lip service to the free-market competition, they, that's DuPont, the biggest chemical company in the country, and Hearst, probably the biggest paper in the country, they in effect introduced a product nobody actually needed, while eradicating one that posed a more ascendant and much more usable product. DuPont and Hearst stood to lose a fortune if hemp paper replaced wood pulp paper on the market. So, they used their media and political influences, and Mr. Smith mentioned those, but he didn't mention Hearst, their influences, to convince the public of the existence of a quote "reefer madness" unquote. This, despite the fact of approximately 5,000 years of human civilization, there has never been a single law bearing cannabis, except in this country. This is underscored by the fact that there has never been a single death linked to cannabis use. Oh, I was surprised to hear that. And it has been scientifically proven to have medical benefits, particularly in mitigating the effects of glaucoma. So, get out your Google, and I'm sure you all can do that, and look up William Randolph Hearst and marijuana. There's a whole bunch of stuff, and they're a lot longer, and William Randolph Hearst, he, like I say, he was the Rupert Murdoch prototype. So, another thing I noticed while I was looking around was Richard Nixon. Now, I think many of you probably remember Richard Nixon.
Yeah, I do remember him.
And I remember him, he's not, not such a bad Democrat. In fact, I, I'll admit I voted for Richard Nixon. But Nixon got in trouble, and he thought it was those damned hippies that were causing all the trouble, and they were making a lot of noise. And I do have a little sister that's almost two decades younger than I am, but that was pretty much of a hippie, really a sweet girl, and I love her, love her then, and I love her still. Anyway, Nixon thought, I'll get rid of those hippies, I'll get rid of their pot. And he appointed a commission, a Schaefer Commission, to study it and come back with a report. They came back with a report, they said, marijuana's not that bad a stuff, we ought to legalize it. Nixon didn't like it, he buried it, and he started the war on drugs, and we still suffer from that. We've got the most people in jail of any country in the world, percentage-wise. It's a shame. So, I, this is kind of a short-term, this afternoon study that I've been looking at. And I'd like to agree with Mr. Pearson that what we need to do is, we need to think about, look at, look at the information like this, and the information that you people brought, and let's think about it. And do we really need a moratorium? No, you people that need painkillers, or the good things that marijuana does for you, I, I think you ought to be able to access it here without traveling to heckin' gone to do it, and keep the money, well, there's no money involved, can't, can't keep the money in the neighborhood. But, so, I'm going to agree with Mr. Pearson, well, he didn't say that we ought to oppose the moratorium, but I think we ought to think about it, and at this point, I'm opposed to the moratorium. Now, if, if worse does come to worse, it looks like there's going to be a move to legalize marijuana across the board. And a person like myself that thinks about the prohibition of alcohol back in the 20s, and how that was such a blessing to organize crime, it was just, it got organized crime on the road. The country finally woke up, and said, we don't need this prohibition. Here's people drinking antifreeze, in those days, it was methanol, not ethylene glycol, but drinking all kinds of stuff. People died by the thousands during prohibition because they drank the wrong stuff. So, we finally got rid of that prohibition, and right about that time, the law pursuers sided in with, DuPont sided in with Randolph Hearst. And, boy, they just loved going after the marijuana people, so. I think it's high time, we just legalize the whole thing, and I would suggest if we do come up with a moratorium, that you get on the, get on the ball and support the petitions that will get regular marijuana on the bill. So, I'm obviously opposed to the moratorium. I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to putting a fee on you so they can come and ransack your place. I, I don't like that either. So, maybe saying they can't be in residential neighborhoods, I think, but I think the state's prepared on those, those regulations. So, that's where I am.
All right. Yeah, okay.
So, I think it was said and denied, that either way, that's a difficult decision. I, I don't disagree with that, and Scott made the comment that, you know, management makes the tough decisions, and that's what we have to do up here. But, in my job, when I have to make a tough decision, I work real hard to get all the information I can. And one of the challenges is sorting out facts from opinions. I don't encourage the outbursts, yet, when Mr., Councilor Kellum was, was speaking, and there was an outburst, that demonstrates the challenge we have. You're wrong, you don't have the information, that's not right. So, on one hand, we've been aware of the situation since November, but I don't know that we've been exposed to as much information as we need, or if we've had an opportunity to absorb it, research it. Again, Councilor Kellum has said, you know, sometimes you sleep on this stuff, and the next day you have a little different thought. You know, Ray Graham, this was on the dais tonight, first time I've seen it, I'd like the opportunity to look into that. Corwin mentioned a couple of YouTube videos, that would be interesting to see. The lady from Lebanon mentioned this testing issue, and Todd, I'm completely in the dark on that. Somebody mentioned that, you know, it's, it's the law, it's our right. Our ordinance lists the two, the House bill and the Senate bill that, in my opinion, are conflicting. So, I did get a call from Andy Olson, our state representative, last night, and he explained that since 1998, you could have six mature plants, 18 immatures, you can grow it yourself, have someone grow it, you can have a caregiver involved. So, that program's been around for 16 years. It apparently is working at some level of success. And I'm not going to sit here and say, I understand your pain, I understand what you're going through, I understand how marijuana helps, you know, I think this would be easier, I think that'll work. I have no clue, folks. I mean, I'm blessed with pretty good health, and, you know, it's, it frustrates me when somebody says, gee, my dad passed away. I say, oh, I know just how you feel. No, you don't, because it's, it's different for everybody. So, I got to thinking that maybe easier for some people to go to Corvallis, to a dispensary, than, than what they're currently doing. I don't know if that's true, I don't know if that's fact, that's, that's a thought, it's an opinion on my part. One lady mentioned she'd gone to Portland. Well, certainly going to Corvallis is going to be easier than, than going to Portland. But I think that, that there is a value in a moratorium, in that it does give us this opportunity to gather more information. Andy Olson quite honestly said, and you'll pardon my language, this is a screwed-up mess in the legislature up in Salem. He said, we rushed into it, and, and now we're left with these consequences, that he says, we're going to be working real hard to- "we're going to be working real hard to try and sort out and straighten it out." That's, that's one aspect of what we buy with a little bit of time to see what's coming down from the state. I'm real curious to see how things go in Carvalis. I'm not opposed to a dispensary, what I'm opposed to or concerned about are the unintended consequences, and we only find out after it's too late. I'll give you an example, we had a homeowner in town come in and complain, and there's a bar across the street, it's too loud, it's too noisy, it's getting worse, worse, worse. We have a long discussion and get staff involved, and it's like, "Well, how is this bar allowed to be there?" "Oh, well, because six years ago, you made a change in the zoning or whatever, and it's loud." It's like, "We did? And, and nobody do it?" So then there's this mad dash and scramble to work with the owner, "Could you enclose part of this, limit your hours," on and on and on. Bingo, we have the unintended consequences. I hope the things go well in Carvalis, and there aren't any problems, and we can say, "Okay, that works, let's go ahead." Or we can say, "You know, that's, it's working pretty good, we could tweak a couple things and make it better." Or, I mean, the worst-case scenario, it's a disaster, and you say, "Gee, I think we made the right call back in March, we averted that disaster." I really don't think that's, that's the way it's going to go. But, in that same vein of the unintended consequences, I was talking to our legal staff during the break, I want to make, I want to figure out if there's some way to keep the Cana Kitchen in business. So, I'm a little concerned, and granted, I understand, here I go stating fact, this opinion, I think I understand the sense of urgency of you folks, but I think we need to be a little bit careful. As an example, if, if there is some value in the, in the moratorium to gather more information, see what the state does, watch Carvalis and so forth, we've just banned or put a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities in Albany for a year. Does that include Cana Kitchen? Because that's not my intent. So boom, right there, "Oh, man, why'd I vote that way? That wasn't my intent." So, it gives us an opportunity to look into situations just like that, and make sure we're going in the right direction. We don't have to wait a year. Our legal counsel has told us many, many times, all it takes is four votes up here. We can do anything we want with four votes. So, it's been mentioned by a couple people that watch and see what happens in November, this may be a moot point. You know, is five or six months long enough to see what happens at Carvalis? It might be, I don't know. I'm not convinced we need to wait until next year, but I think we do need a little more time. And if nothing else, just for me personally, to help absorb some of this information, and I appreciate the testimony from, from everybody. The more, more information I get, I think the better educated decision I can make. And, and at the end of the day, that's what I'm here for, is, is to make what I think is, is the best decision for the entire city. You know, does that mean 51% of the people? Yeah, unfortunately, sometimes it does, but you get, you get some of these issues, and quite honestly, it is a difficult decision. And, and, you know, I go back and forth almost on a, on a daily basis, sat down and, and had coffee with Greg, and, you know, I'm all on board. Now, he's probably sitting there thinking, "What happened, Bill?" So, those are my thoughts.
Okay, all right. Okay, Bessie.
Yeah, and I have a statement I'll read also, but I want to say that when I first brought this up in November, of what was coming down, because I said we wanted to be proactive rather than reactive, and then it was just kind of like, "Well, we don't really want to have to worry about it and whatever and stuff." So I think we may have been able to find out more information, you know, as we went along, but, you know, that's the price we have to pay. Anyway, so...
We can't hear you back here.
Speak up a little bit.
I can't move the mic, I've been instructed.
The mic should be, I think maybe...
Michael, come on and kill me. All right. So, anyway, I was saying that when I brought it back, when I brought it up in November, we wanted to be proactive rather than reactive, to find out what this is all about. Because we as councilors, we don't know everything, you know, just like legislatures don't, legislators don't know everything, they have staff to check into everything, to research it and stuff. And so, basically, it was kind of dropped at that time because no one really wanted to deal with it, so now here we are. But anyway, I'm going to read this statement, that way I don't ramble. "I don't believe that anyone on this council wants more regulations, but in this case, I feel it is the best thing available to address this issue. A few years ago, the legislature passed a law that allowed medical marijuana dispensaries even after the voters said no in the prior election. All of the counties in Oregon, except Multnomah County, voted down the measure." So, there you have the majority saying no, but then the legislature goes ahead and does something different. "In the recent past, this council has been chastised for not listening to the voters, and yet the legislature did, did this, and no one said a word." So, it's, you know, I'm feeling like if we say something like we did on our measures and things like that, we get just yelled at for it, and yet legislature went totally against the public and no one said anything. "During the 2014 session, the legislature did give local governments the opportunity to place moratoriums to ban the dispensaries until May of 2015. This was an important move by the legislature because the law allowing dispensaries is not real clear, and most local governments asked for the chance to get the clarification needed to see which way they will proceed." So, I think as some of the other councilors have stated, it's not that it's, I mean, a total no-go or whatever, but we just don't know everything about it. And so, the city of Carvalis has received at least five applications for dispensaries, and we will be able to observe them along with other cities and counties who follow suit to see how the dispensaries fare. We will then be able to make a more educated decision as to how to proceed. One thing that must be brought up is that if the moratorium is passed tonight, we will not be taking anything away from the medical marijuana cardholders, they'll be able to continue as they have been. So it's not like it's the law saying, "Okay, you guys throw away your cards, you can't do it." You can still do it, but it's going to be the same way that you're doing it now. I've talked with many people since our Monday's work session, and 99% agree the moratorium is the best thing for now. I personally will be voting for the first ordinance, apparently that will become, I guess, next meeting, I guess, but no one knows what will happen in the future, but as for now, in my opinion, it is the right thing to do, and so that's all I have to say.
Okay. So, with that, according to our charter, it looks like there would be four votes for the moratorium, one vote looks like for a shorter time, it wouldn't have to be for the full year, which even adopting the ordinance wouldn't end up, it's, the council can change that at any time. So, any kind of action, it takes four votes for. So, I rarely vote, that's only if there's a tie, so on this issue, I wouldn't be voting on this issue. So, but with that, so this ordinance will be back on the dais in two weeks, which is April...
Nine.
April 9th. So, then they will be taking act, the council will be taking action on this ordinance. The second ordinance then is actually sort of mute if the ban is going into place, because, not, I'm sorry, moratorium. If the, if the moratorium does, you know, come into play, if that's what the council does, finally choose in the two weeks, you know, we can always revisit it and also see about the other ordinance when it comes to the other regulations of keeping it, you know, from a distance from residential zoning, so. And some of you weren't here Monday night when I had mentioned that about my concern on this. I don't know whether medical marijuana is a viable drug or not, I'm not one to state, I'm not a doctor, I don't know any difference on it. But our duty up here, and that's what we're elected to do, is to see how we want Albany to grow, how we, how do we want Albany to look. Our duty is to see about revitalizing areas of town, our downtown, how do we want new neighborhoods to look, where do we want the commercial to be located, where do we want industrial to be located? That is our role as city councilors and, and on to city council. And that's where my main concern was, is keeping dispensaries in a commercial zone and not be right up against residential, because we have many pockets of residential in our, commercial in our community that's next door to residential housing. So, and, and actually, Rhea, I had looked today, you were 300 feet from residential.
I am right next to residential.
So, no, I think I looked, it was, it's...
I am next door to a house.
Okay.
But, yeah.
It's a convention, I actually went and looked at that.
But I think the zoning to it's different, on the zoning, so can look at that, but I looked yesterday and I found 300 feet on that.
I also, I love that for...
So, but, but with that, that's the, you know, that's the thing that some of the, you know, wanting to look at is making sure that we keep neighborhoods livable. And, because I know most of you folks here don't see maybe anything different, you know, there's no problem with having a dispensary in a neighborhood, but there's a lot of people that would feel differently. So we're here to try to see what's the balance in our community. And, so, so it's not denying, many people, believe me, it's not denying people access to a dispensary, it's just, let's just place them in certain areas of town. So, that's sort of where, that's my opinion on the issue, on that. The, actually, the fee coming up for the compliance fee was to give kind of a little extra step for our police department to, they could randomly go into a dispensary and make sure they follow state law. It's not for, it's not testing the marijuana, it's not for any of that, it's just to be able to have that access. Folks, there is communities that have what they call the head shops, so that's something we have to look at, if, do you want that in our community? So we have to sort of look at, well, if we don't want to have the head shops in our community, what do we do? The only tools city has is in our zoning, in our ordinances, so what can we do to be able to try to make sure that we keep neighborhoods livable and maybe a head shop doesn't end up in a neighborhood? So, that's the reason for having that zoning piece to it. And mostly, if you don't have that sort of a little extra level of inspection, then what if there is a head shop in Albany? How are we really going to know? Because the state is only...
Been for years, there's been a head shop for years.
Well, then that's why we need to have this fee. So, we need to be able to have that extra, be able to go in and be able to do a little inspection, so if that is in our community, then, Rhea, we need to do something about it.
There's been head shops in Albany for years. Do you know any head shops?
No, I mean, the head shop selling the marijuana, or dispensing it.
The head shop sells pipes.
No, I'm talking about the head shop with the marijuana, dispensing it.
There's no such thing as a head shop with...
Because it's not legal right now, so, but let's not, okay, this, okay, folks, this isn't a debate, this was my turn to give my opinion, okay?
The head shop is legal.
Rhea, I'm talking about if a head shop was allowed to be as a dispensary, under the new state rules, is what I'm referring to. So, that's where we need to watch out on that, so. But, yeah, just a sec, but there is, there, I know there's, some of you are thinking that there isn't folks here that are opposed to the, you know, dispensaries. This is an issue that most people don't want to come out publicly. Every one of you, I do hope you know that you are going to be on TV, you're on TV live right now. You actually, and it's taped, and it's on the city's website, anybody can see it from years down the road from now, so. But, so most people don't want to come forward when it comes to this kind of issue and state their opinion. So that's why there is, believe me, I've heard from hundreds and hundreds of people on this issue, and it's split in the middle. 50% are for, 50% are against, and we're the ones here that we need to be able to try to make the decision based on what's, what's really going to be able to fit in with our community. And that's what the council has to be able to take that into consideration. It's not an easy decision for any, any one of us to make, and no matter what, we're going to please some and we're not going to please others, so. But, so, so, yeah, but, okay, Floyd?
Yeah, one item I forgot to mention that I've been thinking about in this process is, to go back to the time that the original testimony occurred before the legislature and looking at adoption, you know, at that time it was projected that there were going to be less than 5,000 medical marijuana. Now, it's, my understanding is over 60,000. I have absolutely no problem with the people who have a legitimate need, I do have a problem with the people that are abusing the system. To that extent, I think we have some people writing prescriptions that should not be writing prescriptions, and for those folks in the audience and in the community that want to move towards having a legitimate process to get medical marijuana, I would hope that you would join us in asking the legislature to tighten down on the review of those physicians that are allowing abuse of the system, because it's the abuse that generates the fear in the community.
Well said. Okay, so Bill, anything else?
I'd like to request that staff look into the wording on this ordinance. As I indicated earlier, I'm, would be in support of Cana Kitchen staying in business. I don't know if it, if it's in the wording, marijuana facilities versus medical marijuana dispensary, but that would be for staff to look into and research and see if there is a distinction there. If we could have that information at the April 7th work session, that would be helpful in moving ahead on April 9th.
Okay, anything else?
And, and, you know, I want to follow up, I'm sorry, I meant to preface that with, again, I'm not going to sit up here and claim that I've got all the information, got all the facts, but I can formulate an opinion, and I have of the opinion that Cana Kitchen helps a lot of people. So that's the basis for, for my thoughts on that.
I think everyone agrees with that, so, yeah. Right, yeah, Rich, then, Ray?
I guess what I am, it's my understanding, and I'm not asking a question, because I don't want to elicit an answer, but it's my understanding that Cana Kitchen does not grow, they only take other people's materials and quote "repair them" unquote, convert them. So there would be at least a thought process to take back to a legislative body to delineate a difference between those who grow and distribute and those who simply convert, if staff could have that.
I would tend to disagree with that. Oftentimes, there are questions that are best left unasked, and I think we could make a decision as to whether we consider Cana Kitchen to being a dispensary or a kitchen. I'd like to think of them as a kitchen.
The state's already done that, though.
Yeah, Ray?
Some of the folks here on the dais are asking, you know, they think that we still need to make, get more information, and if that's true, I would hope that all of us up here who have not already had a formal tour of the proposed dispensary avail themselves to see what in fact is actually a dispensary, looks like a real one, what the requirements are, and the, how it's almost like walking into a bank vault type of a process, so that you can get more education.
Any more comments on this item? Okay, all right, so folks, we will, April 9th, be taking action on this, so, okay?
I have a question about process and the second reading, if I may?
For the second reading, that'll be done at the next meeting.
But I have a question about the process.
Okay, what's that question?
With the first reading being tonight, and the second reading being two weeks from now, does that then go to a vote?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And we will vote then?
Yeah, we're voting on April 9th on this ordinance.
But public testimony will be closed and not heard at the next meeting?
This, this is not a quasi-judicial-type hearing, so you, every one of you are able to contact any councilors, any one of us, you can email, you can call, you can ask for a visit, this is not a hearing that we are, we can't have any type of ex parte contact, we can't on this.
She's asking about next, two weeks from now, can there be public testimony at the meeting next, two weeks from now?
At the meeting, normally the first reading of ordinance would be before the business from the public, so I would, your best to just go ahead and submit written testimony beforehand. And it's best to get that in a timely manner, so the council has a chance to read it, you know, before they, you know, before... know, before they, you know, before the meeting. It's very hard when we get stuff handed out to us on the dais.
Does it change in the wording of the ordinance that we have to address?
No, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't, so, yeah. And all of our meetings also, the agendas are always online. They'll be posted by the Friday before, so, and the full agenda, ordinance, everything is, is on, on our city website, so you can be able to access that.
I apologize. Point of order, only the first ordinance was addressed by the council. And correct me if I'm wrong, the second ordinance is a second item that the council was supposed to be reviewing this evening?
The second...
And I'm just, it's a total point of order?
Right.
Just to do the regular process.
That's a good question. That's a good question, and I kind of didn't really elaborate on that. So, basically, if we, if the council is going towards a moratorium for a year, then we really won't be taking up the other two, we won't be taking up the other ordinance until then.
And I apologize again, however, a vote was not held this evening on that particular item, so...
Yes, it was. It says "or."
So, yeah, so...
So, with the, the "or" then, basically, they're, they're a single item then?
Right, yeah.
Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, no, it's kind of confusing. This is more kind of a unique, usually, we have an ordinance all one, but we kind of separated the two. Yeah, so, take action.
Is he understanding that both of these ordinances are now rolled into one? Is that what you're...
No, no, that's not it, so.
It's a vote for it.
Yes, if, if the council on April 9th doesn't vote for the moratorium, then we will be looking at the other regulations on that.
Understood, thank you.
Wouldn't have to.
Yeah, mm-hmm, right. Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Okay. Next council, you have adoption of a resolution. This is on page 11, and this is authorizing the city manager to execute and record a restrictive covenant for park purposes on page 11. What would you like to do with this item?
Move adoption of the resolution from page 11. Second, why don't we take two minutes and hit the room later?
And before we vote, I'd kind of like to hear from staff on this.
Okay, all right.
Ed, Ed.
Yeah, we'll just wait.
There he is, making his way forward as we speak.
Stick around. Yes, I told him you'd just stick around.
I can't deny it.
Oh, Hossel, yes.
Early in the morning.
I have looked at these two...
Hossel doesn't have to come to these meetings anymore because he can now watch us out We miss you.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Not probably like that, would you?
Some may not.
But it's got the problem there.
I get a little rummy, just slap me upside the head.
Oh, you're doing it.
Thank you for that, Attorney General.
It feels good, but it's tough, you know?
I didn't know you were having to wait back there the whole night.
Floyd was in my office.
Sorry.
I stayed in my office. Yeah, I had some work to do.
All right, Bill, I think you had a question.
Are we ready?
Yep. You have a question, Bill? Was it you?
I had a question. Just wanted to know a little background on this.
We have, this is the area around the subdivision out at the end of 53rd Avenue, and you've got all that green space totally surrounding that subdivision. And all of that land came to the city via donation over several years. And it came from a developer who was required essentially to donate, set aside and protect that land as his mitigation requirements related to the filling of wetlands in that subdivision, Stu Stone Oak Creek Park Development. And so, this kind of restrictive covenant has been applied to every tract that he donated to the, the city over the years, with the exception of one tract, an earlier tract, Tract N. I think it was an oversight, I guess, by DSL, Department of State Lands. They caught their mistake. They asked him to ask the city if we would be willing to accept and then file a restrictive covenant on the only remaining tract. So, that's what this is all about. It's cleaning up essentially from DSL's perspective.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, all right. There's my motion in a second. So, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next is adoption of the consent calendar. If there's any items that need to be pulled off, let me know. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Point of clarification and question, Stuart. Today, there was a question in the paper about the May 15th of 2015 potential general election for a public safety facility bond. And I asked Stuart about that date being in the plan under Safe Community.
Thanks. That has been part of our plan, I think, for the last couple of years, and the target date was March. We satisfied that objective last fall in the, the measure that was referred to the voters for the bond that was rejected by the voters.
So, that date is not there to presuppose the recommendation coming from the Burright-Morris Task Group.
Right. And the dates generally in the strategic plan are target dates that we're working towards. If they're related to specific projects, they generally appear in the capital improvements project program. And hopefully, that's helpful.
Okay. With that clarification, I would move adoption of the consent calendar. Second?
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, business from the council. So, Councilor Kellum, anything?
I am glad that we recognize that we are here to disagree, and we don't have to be disagreeable.
Yes. Okay, Councilor Kopczynski.
I'm tired.
Tired, yes, uh-huh. Collins?
Just a couple of short items. One, today at the MPO meeting, we had a presentation from the people doing the environmental assessment, state staff, about the options for the South Jefferson exit to Highway 20. I would request that we ask Mark to schedule some time on a work session to bring forth what the current environmental assessment is considering and the implications to the City of Albany. If you recall, when we adopted the transportation plan, we had passed a resolution that was addressing the potential of closure for Airport Road, and we objected, the resolution says we would not support anything that shoved additional traffic through North Shore and South Shore. They're aware of that resolution, but there are, I think things are moving significantly along as it may deal with Airport Road, and I think council needs to be brought up to date on what those are. The other is, we learned that there's a email that came out from the Federal Highway Administration that basically said they've spent all the money in the trust fund, and we could probably look in the future for potential severe cutbacks to the states and then ultimately to the MPOs. It can deal with deferring construction of major projects within the state and within our area, and it could also impact the availability of funding for transit systems.
Okay, yeah. And it's interesting that you brought that up, because on the I-5 regional study, Bill, you're on the stakeholders or steering, I can't remember which one you're on compared to what I'm on, but they were supposed to convene a meeting, and I think it was last fall, and never did.
They never did.
Yeah, so, I'm surprised.
They have some new staff. I'm, I'm, I think they're trying to come up to speed. I think we are extremely fortunate in that we have a person in the region office, Amy Ramsdale.
Yeah, she's great.
Amy is, she's been tracking with that program. She understands our concerns, and sometimes it's difficult to get concerns and comments across to design engineers, but I think Amy's doing a great job of representing our interest.
I do, too.
I thought they had a pretty good plan and incorporated use, the use of Bain Street and so forth. Are they moving away from it?
They're backing away from that because of what's called Title VI, which basically, it's a federal title that said, "If you impact significantly a lower-income housing group to benefit the greater community, you have to get into Title VI, which is property acquisition, displacement, reimbursement." And the state, I think, is very fearful of even touching that. So, under the current plan we saw today, there is a plan being proposed to Culdesac Airport, push all the southbound traffic out onto the freeway, and then if you want to come back onto Highway 20 to go east or west, you're on the freeway, off the freeway, take the exit ramp and get up on top and split.
Oh, no.
And so, that's one of the significant differences I think this council needs to be aware of, because we will have an opportunity to provide comments to the environmental assessment.
Totally against all of the several years of public input in the process that we went through on that, because that would not go over well with that.
I'm just shocked that the transportation people continue to do this.
Yeah.
And they just repeat their mistakes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I was made aware of, that's where they were in conversations with Amy. Amy has tried to be very careful with her role, being an ODOT employee, also receiving some of her salary from federal funding. She can't get in a position of lobbying. What she's trying to do is help define what the impacts might be and the concerns of local government.
Well, one of the, I'm sorry, one of the issues that they discussed today, though, as we were talking about those concerns, was adding, well, they're looking at adding three lanes or an extra lane to the freeway between the South Jefferson interchange and the Saniam Highway interchange.
Right.
But between Knox Butte and Saniam, adding an additional fourth lane on the southbound to try to facilitate people getting on the freeway and off the freeway.
Acceleration, deceleration.
Yeah, and I don't know enough about that to say that's a good option or not, but they are, they're looking at other mitigations there in addition to cul-de-sac-ing Airport Road, and I haven't had any time to really think.
Well, and what we told them in those meetings is, if they're going to cul-de-sac Airport Road, they need to do it just south of Costco then, you know, south of Kildare. Because, other words, if they're going to do it down towards Saniam Highway, you're shoving all that traffic in through the neighborhood of the North Shore, South Shore Drive neighborhood, and they were the ones very adamant and at all of those meetings stating, "Don't shove that traffic through our neighborhoods," so...
Well, you're right. You'd either, if you wanted to go from Costco to Home Depot, you'd go through the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Or you get on the freeway for a tenth of an hour.
Yeah. I think that, I think that what I would be asking staff to do is get an expanded map that actually shows how, how they are thinking it might work, because given the scale of the maps we're dealing with today, you couldn't really tell. And, but I had some great concern with the potential to that. If, if you cul-de-sac Airport just south of Costco, then how do you get the access back on northbound without going through the neighborhood? Because where Airport currently comes in the Highway 20 will be the off-ramp, southbound off-ramp. So, you're going to have out-of-directional traffic going head-to-head.
They've got some big issues there, but I really think they need to, you know, reconvene these meetings that everybody went through, so...
Hey, we just leave it the way it is.
So, well, yeah, because of the interchange, they're going to be changing the interchange on both of them.
Dick, I think the reality is, for you and I, it will be what it is after we're gone.
Like 20 years by the time they get to it.
I'm going to make it to 90.
Well, we talked about, you know, we're talking about 18, just to get some of the initial funding done for right-of-way acquisition, and then depending upon availability of funding, and nobody yet has generated a number, but it's going to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars to do from South Jefferson, dealing with the Millersburg interchange, Knox Butte, and Highway 20. If, if we saw even a third of that done in my lifetime, it'd be a huge step forward. And I'm younger than you are.
You don't think I'm going to make it to 90?
You're going to go before I do.
Okay, is that it, Floyd?
Yes, that's it, that's enough.
Okay, all right. Counselor Olson, what do you got?
Yeah, I missed out asking the question, but on this floodway stuff that we just approved, is that, would that interfere with widening Waverly Drive?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Doesn't that floodplain land that we just had is sacred from, for now, from now on? Doesn't that come up in that border against Waverly Drive?
No, this would be one over by OBCC.
Oak Creek, does Oak Creek go under Waverly Drive?
Down 53rd Avenue, that section of town, southwest.
Oh, it's on the other, it's on the other side of Sepphic Avenue? Oh, I was thinking it was on the...
Yeah, no.
East, east side of Sepphic.
Is that it?
Yeah.
All right. Counselor Colburn? Nope. Johnson?
Nothing tonight.
And me either. It's getting late, so, interim city manager.
No.
Okay. How about Public Works Director, Community Development? He's got such a big role.
A reminder that we will have a very short ARA meeting upon adjournment of the council.
Anyone else have anything? Okay. With that, we have a work session April 7th and regular session April 9th, and with that, we are adjourned, so thank you, folks.